And via livestream and call the April 25, 2023 regular meeting to order with all board members present. The Navy JROTC color guard from Point Loma High School will now present the colors. Please stand for presentation of the colors. Trustee Nepomassino, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Start. Ready, cut. For. Arms. Right. Face. Forward. Mark. Left. 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 Right. Right.
Thank you, please be seated. I would like a motion to adopt today's agenda. Do we have a motion? Motion by trustee Nepomassino, do we have a second? Second by trustee Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Let's see, please vote, trustee Nepomassino.
Aye.
And trustee Quittoriano.
Aye.
And all others, please. Okay, that vote passes unanimously. Before we get excited, before we get started, excuse me, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in remembrance of three employees who have recently passed away. They are Shannon Dearborn, Judy Tenorio, and Judy McDonald. Thank you very much.
Today's, today's meeting of the Board of Education is a business meeting that is conducted in public and board members will not engage in a dialogue with members of the audience. Board by law 1025 sets the time limit for public comment on agenda items at 10 minutes per side, pro and con, or 20 minutes total. Speakers will be able to provide testimony at the beginning of the appropriate agenda item or at the end of the meeting for non-agenda public comment. The list of public speakers is attached to Agenda Item B2. Please listen for your name to be called. Speakers are listed and called in the order received. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. Speakers participating via Zoom will be asked to unmute when their name is called. If you are unable to unmute yourself, we will call the next speaker. Zoom does not allow staff to access your personal device to unmute a speaker. Please follow along with the agenda so you know when your item is coming up for discussion. If you would like to sign up for in-person public comment, iPads are available in the back of the auditorium and in the lobby.
Thank you. I'd now like to ask Hancock Elementary School Principal Irene Hightower, Community Schools Site Coordinator Abi Avila, and 5th grade students Charlotte Davis, Madeline Beeler, Elijah Bennett, and Johann Kinney to come to the podium to introduce tonight's student presentation. While they're coming up, we're just going to give Superintendent Dr. Jackson a brief minute to provide some context on community schools, which they're going to be presenting about this evening.
Thank you, President Baso, and good evening and welcome, everyone. I do want to acknowledge Hancock's participation in our community schools effort. And part of the community schools process is ensuring that 70% or more of our students are eligible for free and reduced lunch. And also, there is a letter of intent showing support from all of our educational partners in the community and want to thank all of our educational partners. In addition, Hancock has 80% family, staff, community participation. And that is a testament to the leadership of Irene and all of our young people. Recent activities include a flu clinic, thank you very much. And this evening, we're going to hear some great news about the progress and process of Hancock. So, welcome, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Elijah Bennett and I am a 5th grader from Hancock. Good afternoon, Superintendent Jackson and the Board of Education members. We are 5th grade students from Hancock Elementary and we will be sharing information about our school becoming a community school. We also brought with us today our parents, our principal, Ms. Hightower, and our community school coordinator, Ms. Abby. Hancock Elementary was built in 1977. Most people think our school is named after John Hancock, who signed the Declaration of Independence. But we are named after Joy Bright Hancock, who served in both world wars and reached the rank of captain in our navy. Our school is in Tarasana and we live in the largest military housing in the world. Almost everyone at our school has a parent in the military. Because of the needs of the military, most kids only stay at Hancock about three years. Last school year, our school's SGT researched and applied to become its community school. On March 22nd last year, the school board named Hancock a community school with four other schools. Last September, our school team interviewed 11 people and chose Ms. Abby to be our site coordinator for community schools. As a community, there are pillars that we will follow that will be presented in the next slide.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Davis and I am also a 5th grader from Hancock Elementary. Now, what are the pillars, you might, you might ask? One is integrated supports for students so we can learn. These can be school or home related. Another is family and community engagement, activities that have our families be connected to the school. A third one is collaborative leadership. We have a lot of committees at school that teachers, staff, and parents work on to make big decisions for our school. The last one is extended learning time and opportunities so we can learn after school, on weekends, and during the summer. Some examples of integrated supports that we have had this year include lots of counseling groups that students can participate in. We started a new program for reading and math called Eye Ready. The Navy Clinic came to our school to give flu shots for families who wanted them. And we've had lots of giveaways for food, shoes, backpacks, and books for many groups, including Support the Enlisted project where my mom works. We've also had a day of service where parents volunteered to do projects for teachers. Some examples of family and community engagement this year included doing a survey to all of our staff and families and having family movie nights. We also have monthly flag assemblies where students get awards for academics and behavior expectations. After report cards, we have trimester awards for students with good attendance and citizenship. We also do events with Miller Elementary, which is down the street from us and also has a lot of military families. We also purchased a poster maker to advertise our family events and for teachers to use for classroom charts.
Hi, my name is Madeline Beeler and I am also a 5th grader from Hancock. Some examples of collaborative leadership groups at our school include our community schools team, who created the surveys for this year, our SGT, who decides how we spend money we get for being a community school, our PTF, works to provide fundraisers for our school so we can have an art and garden teacher, and our SSC, who helps decide how to spend money our school gets from the district. Some examples of extended learning time include our teachers doing after-school tutoring, Saturday school so kids can make up absences, literacy, science, and math nights so our parents can come and do projects with us that teachers organize, and a new program that is called Words Alive that some of our kindergartners and their parents will get to be in after school. And conferences that some of our teachers and parents will get to attend this year. Our needs assessment survey this year had great participation. 82% of staff at Hancock and 83% of Hancock families participated. From all the surveys, the top three areas our community would like to continue or add to at Hancock include wellness, academic supports, and enrichment.
Hi, my name is Johann Kinney and I'm a 5th grader at Hancock Elementary School. We would like to end our presentation with our school pledge that we say at all assemblies and meetings. Soaring with the Eagles. Self-control on the path to success. Act responsibly and remember to be respectful. Thank you for listening to our presentation supporting Hancock Community School and military families. Please come visit the school soon.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I loved how you, you know, I could tell your heart was in it, but then you also had done a survey. So you had like data and, you know, really thoughtful remarks and information to share with us too, really, and to see, you know, what your community was really needing. So that's super important and it sounds like you guys are doing an amazing job there. So, thank you so much.
It's really exciting to hear from you, all of the things that you're doing at Hancock as a community school. Last meeting, we heard about community schools and you really brought it to life for us by giving examples of all the great things you're doing and really want to recognize Principal Hightower for her great leadership. And also, this is, we voted, I think, last time for Month of the Military Child to recognize that, just this month, and what a beautiful reminder of having all of you here with us today.
Dr. Whitehurst Payne.
I just want to say that I congratulate all of you because I know how difficult it is to have your parents in and out in the military. And I want to say thank you to not only your, your family member who's participating in the military, but to you also, because technically you're in the military too, because you have to deal with, you don't have your parent with you. So, thank you for all the service that you give in addition to your family member.
Thank you.
Firstly, I want to congratulate you all on doing such an outstanding job and presentation at today's board meeting. As a military child myself, I, I've experienced a lot of the hardships and challenges that military children have to go through and military families have to go through. So, just seeing how your community is there to support you through those challenges is truly so heartwarming and it's great to see your leadership both on campus and here today. Thank you.
Would you guys like to take a quick picture?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. We're now going to hear Item C2. This is the American Heart Association Silver Level Workforce Wellbeing Scorecard Recognition. And I have to say, this is kind of full circle because I used to be a health educator for the American Heart Association, a few years back. So, I'm very excited to welcome them here this evening and I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Jackson to please present the item.
Thank you, President Baso. I'd like to invite, come on down. We're going to have, from the American, American Heart Association Senior Director, Community Impact, Chelsea Walzac Verks, and District Wellness Program Coordinator, Supervisor, I should say, Kate McDevitt, to come and present the award. Thank you for being here.
All right, there we go. I was like, I can, I got this, I can read, I got this, all right. Thank you so-
And you have to follow the amazing students, right?
I know, I was like, he put us right behind that great presentation. Well, thank you so much for having us here tonight. And I love the shout out to the American Heart Association, President Baso, so thank you. My name is Chelsea Walzac Verks. I'm the Senior Community Impact Director of the American Heart Association for San Diego County. And on behalf of the American Heart Association, we are very excited to be presenting San Diego Unified School District the Silver Level Award on the American Heart Association's newly reimagined workforce wellbeing scorecard. It's a new name for me too, so I'm trying to make sure I get through it and with the right wording. I won't flip back to our index talk. So, new science has been published on the role that mental health, wellbeing, and health equity play in the health and wellbeing of the workforce. So, to reflect this, the American Heart Association's existing Workplace Health Achievement Index was actually updated by our science experts to emphasize whole person health and wellbeing. The scorecard actually has two new sections. This year, health equity and organizational wellbeing, as well as actually a new scoring and recognition system. So, the scorecard is part of a new broader platform that provides tools, resources, and access to the best practices for employers to achieve continuous improvement in health and wellbeing. So, although with these changes, San Diego Unified School District actually saw a change in the recognition level. I know that you were at gold for many years before this and did see that step down to silver. I am absolutely positive with the dedication of the Fantastic Wellness Council and this leadership that we will see a return to gold if the new scorecard very soon. The pandemic changed the future of the workforce for millions of employees, disrupting their pre-pandemic work lives and putting a spotlight really on the needs to create a work culture that supports employee health, mind, and body. The workforce is facing high levels of burnout and the great resignation has challenged business leaders to keep employees healthy, happy, and empowered. Building a culture of where employees thrive is no longer an option. It's absolutely a business and organizational imperative and it's one that this district has always taken to heart. That's why the American Heart Association has created this new updated scorecard to really join forces with organizations across the nation to achieve our collective mission to unleash the power of a healthy, happy workforce. So, we really want to congratulate San Diego Unified School District on continuing on this journey with us to help strengthen the health of our nation and our San Diego community.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Kate McDevitt, the District Wellness Supervisor. It's great to see you all. And I'm thrilled that we're joined tonight by many of our local, state, and national partners who have helped to make this work possible, as well as many of our District Wellness Council members. And I'm just going to ask them to stand.
Board President Basos, would you please join us to receive the award?
Absolutely, and then I'm going to ask everyone to come back up to take a picture. Chelsea and I bonded at the city council meeting, I think it was like a year ago, where we sat for like three hours to testify on the, to get rid of smokeless tobacco. And they were victorious, so it was a, it was a long but good experience. Okay, on to Item C3, the 2223 Eighth Annual SDUSD Recycling Challenge Awards. Dr. Jackson, please present the item.
Thank you, President Baso. And as President Baso mentioned, this is the Eighth Annual Recycling Challenge and we're going to actually see a video that was put together by the students from Patrick Henry High School. And I'd like to ask our district recycling specialist, Janet Whited, is she here? Yes, hi Janet, come on forward. And the students from Patrick Henry High School, I think we have some students? Oh, you're welcome to come forward too, stand up, be recognized, give them a round of applause. And certainly acknowledge Michelle Irwin, the great principal at Patrick Henry. And thank you for all that you've done and I know you're going to introduce the video and it's great to see you all and see you again.
The one that you're supposed to read first, right? Read and follow directions, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here and good afternoon. Again, my name is Janet Whited, the district's recycling specialist and I'm very pleased to have this opportunity to recognize the outstanding winners and work of our 2223 Recycling Challenge. The winners of this challenge, just as quick background, are determined based on their overall waste diversion, the lowest per capita student trash generation, and the level of sustainability education and outreach programs implemented on campus. As far as diversion, all of our winners this year have recycled approximately 24,000 pounds per month of material combined. And all of our schools overall recycle over 290,000 pounds of material combined, which is a great effort and really helps towards our district diversion rates. All of our winners were recognized a little bit earlier in the year, just prior to spring break, with an on-campus visit, just to enable more students to be involved and to be recognized on their campus for their efforts. We were, they were presented with a certificate of achievement and in most cases, one of those big large checks that you've seen in the past, a symbolic check. I did just get our actual monetary checks from Republic Services, who is our district wasting recycling service provider and also a partner with us, with us on this program. So, I'm sure our winners will be happy to know that I have the checks with me and they will be getting them tonight, so got the money. But without further ado, I would like to introduce Abby Darling and the other students. She can introduce from our first place Patrick Henry High School winners.
This is Anna Brew and this is Callie Rye. Callie heads the Surf Rider Club at our school and Anna is the president of the Environmental Club at our school. Yeah, so the video we have was made by Ricky Moore, who is part of our school's broadcast program. And the video just kind of summarizes how we got to that point and how we did win the recycling challenge.
If we can show the, oh, it's happening already, thank you, Martin.
Annually, the United States produces 258 million tons of waste. 562,442 of those tons are produced in schools and universities in California. Implementing school waste management strategies is crucial to ensure a safe and healthy planning. I'm Abby Darling, the Environmental Commissioner here at Patrick Henry. Patrick Henry, Marvin Elementary, and Stanley Middle School won the San Diego Unified School District's Recycling Challenge. Runner-ups for each school level were Sandberg Elementary, Knox Middle School, and Canyon Hills High School. Hardy Elementary was the most improved school. These schools explore the ways to implement green values and inspire eco-conscious lifestyles. Patrick Henry diverted 60% of recyclable materials from becoming waste by using blue bins. With a student body of over 2,600, litter is bound to be a problem. We are fortunate enough to have passionate custodians and our head custodian and plant operations supervisor, Ms. Murphy, separates the litter around campus for the recyclables in the proper bin. Tian Nguyen and the Community Service Club help every Thursday on campus to get what litter custodians have missed. Our on-campus thrift store recycles old clothes as well. The thrift stores open Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays at lunch. Riley Gattuso and her club price everything at $1 so students can have affordable clothing. California law requires that everyone manages their green waste. Just this year, Henry has stopped approximately 400 pounds of food from becoming waste from our cafeterias. Our cafeteria workers bag any leftover food that can be composted. With the compostable food, our aquaponics commissioners, Naya Obakos Delrios and Fatima Mohammed and garden club's Isabella Rodriguez stir various warm bins on campus to make nutrient soil to plant peppers, peas, and native plants. The bins are scattered around campus with different teachers keeping them in front of their classroom. Patrick Henry partners with I Love a Clean San Diego as part of their Think Blue Brigade, the San Diego chapter of Surf Rider and EcoLife Conservation. Anna Brew heads our environmental club on campus and Callie Ryder heads Surf Rider, which reduces marine debris and improves ocean health. I lead Greenpeace Club and the Environmental Literacy Task Force. On campus, we look to build a strong community that wants to pursue a greener future.
I'll say a few closing things. Thank you so much, Henry, hi, for that wonderful video and just encapsulating kind of all the efforts that a winning school can do in the environmental effort here at San Diego Unified. And I have to say, they continually are our first place winner over time because they have such an excellent program and a staff and, and that is very supportive. At this time, is it all right if I ask the winners to stand or just to be recognized and maybe come down for a photo as well? Okay, thank you so much. Again, our first place in the high school category, Patrick Henry High School, I think Michelle, Principal Michelle Irwin, Kathy Murphy, the plant operations supervisor, Laura Dickens, our environmental science teacher and advisor, I think, are here. If you'd like to stand, and if you could remain standing, then we'll all come down. And of course, our students. Students, you need to stand up as well. And runner-up for our high school category is Canyon Hills High. I believe Principal Erica Renfree is here, as well as Scott Legace, the food services supervisor, to represent, thank you. And in our middle school category, we have Stanley Middle, represented by teacher advisor Shelley Ranico and several of her green, green team students and garden club students are here as well. Thank you. And our runner-up in the middle school is Knox Middle, which is represented by Nick Roth, our building and services supervisor. Please stand up, Nick, back in the back, thank you so much. And for our elementary category, first place winner- And for our elementary category, first place winner Marvin Elementary, with Principal Armando Tovar and Diana Foss, the building services supervisor. All right, Marvin, way to go. You have an excellent program there. And our runner-up this year, Sandberg Elementary, with Principal Lindsay Burningham and Clyde Smith, the BSS, representing that school and their efforts. Marvin and Henry are always head-to-head in the competition. And last but not least, I want to list our most improved school, which is Hardy Elementary, which increased their diversion by 10%, representing Principal Laura Elwin. And I'm not sure if Jerry Tinsley is here as well, their BSS. So thank you so much. Are you up for one more picture?
Absolutely.
Get your exercise in. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you again for being here and thank you for your patience with all the pictures tonight. They were all important. Okay, we do not have any reportable actions from closed session. So we are going to move to Dr. Jackson. Are there any administrative assignments to report?
Thank you, President Bosso. And yes, I have two appointments that we'll be making tonight. The first is Program Manager, Special Education for Area Four. Congratulations, Anthony DeLuca. I know you will be missed at your school, but congratulations and welcome to this new role. What did I say? Rolando? Yes, give it up. And the second is Program Manager for Educational Technology. We have Derek Suzuki, who will continue supporting our district. Congratulations and welcome to these new roles. Thank you, President Bosso.
At this time, I'd like our ASB student Shayna Denise Delary from the San Diego School of Creative and Performing Arts to introduce herself. And Shayna, we'd like to hear about you and what's going on at your school.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. My name is Shayna Denise Delary. I'm the ASB president at SDSCPA. So I would like to start off by talking, well, I have, I believe, four points I'd like to get through, which is the successful events at our campus, the leadership at SCPA, the arts and the academics. So this year, we've had two traditional dances so far, which is our Fright Night. And homecoming Fright Night is for our middle school, as we are a middle school, high school campus. I would also like to preface that our school is more of like a typical school in the fact that we are focused on the arts. So each student that comes into our school has auditioned for a certain major. So me personally, I'm a fine arts major. So yes, and then, so in place of a homecoming game, we have juniors versus seniors. And that is where the juniors and seniors within our campus share their artwork or share their skill and compete against one another for homecoming. And yeah, so this year, seniors won. Yay. And then we do have Cafecito and Prom coming up, along with Day of the Arts Cafecito is our open mic event for our creative writers and our fine arts majors and visual artists to share their work as well. And then I would also like to mention Culture Night and Club Fair. So Club Fair, we have 17-plus clubs within our campus. And these are all like leadership-based, hobby-based, or like majors. And then also Culture Night. So Culture Night is one of the goals that I had for my term. I really wanted to have a night where we could celebrate the diversity on campus. And so this event had various food trucks invited and local businesses. So we really wanted to put an emphasis on POC, local businesses, within San Diego. And we wanted to give them this opportunity to share their small business with the community. And so we invited them over to our school, along with the student artists, our own student artists, to share their work and sell their work within the community as students, their families and friends were able to attend. So yes, it was a very large community event. And I'm really proud to say that we were able to have it and have had confirmation that they plan on having it as an annual event at our school. And then we also recently premiered The Assembly, which is where eight of our alumni at SCPA traveled to Auschwitz and then shared their experience with a Holocaust survivor. And it was shown in front of a live audience. And then moving on to leadership at SCPA, we do have our ASB. Our elections have just like, we're very close to closing our elections. And we have added a student relations committee. And we wanted that committee to be focused on research-based, on cultural identity within our students so we could encourage diversity within our campus and finding their own identities in SCPA. So yes, that is what student relations is within ASB. And then we also have our CPD, Community Professional Development Committee, which focuses on like food drives and clothing drives, kind of reaching out to the community outside of SCPA. And then we also have our cultural-based clubs, which is Papio Metro BSU. We have been working on trying to collaborate with them more this year as we felt that the school spirit kind of changed due to COVID. So this year, I think we were able to really bring that back. We have been trying to collaborate with our cultural-based clubs more in order to have them more promoted within our students so that they're aware that they have those resources to them, or available to them. And then we also have our various art clubs and clubs that take initiative within our campus. So for example, our gardening club really does help with the beautification of our campus. And we also have a very new Ego Club within our campus that takes more initiative on sharing their awareness of how our school is taking steps with environmental impacts. And then also, we have our No Place for Hate Committee. Or within our school, it is our third year getting our accreditation. And that is completed through the projects on anti-bias and cultural inclusivity. And then finally, I wanted to go over our arts. So in SCPA, once again, we're a very arts-focused school. So we recently had our, I believe we have an annual show. And this year, our gallery was beamed Dear Future. And our visual artists were able to share their work. And then we also have something called Art Juries. And each major has a jury that they must do within their high school career. I had my junior year. And each major kind of has to share their work with an artist in residence. Usually they're from San Diego, but sometimes they are from outside. And it gives our students the opportunity to get critique on their work, along with like figuring out how to add on to their portfolios in order to reach higher education if they plan to pursue that. We also have our bigger productions, such as Mamma Mia, which was sold out every show that it made, along with Once Upon a Mattress, which is our middle school production. We also have our senior exhibitions. Dance, the dance majors had their senior exhibition earlier in the year. And then the fine arts majors, I believe, have theirs on May 12. So yes, we are also preparing for our dance concert that opens next week. You are all invited to attend. It is called Revolve Evolve. And then we also had our Portfolio Day this year. This gives our visual artists an opportunity to get critique from colleges, from art colleges, if they plan to pursue the arts. And it gives us an opportunity to kind of share our portfolios with those schools and figure out how we can implement certain pieces to build up our portfolio to be fit for those schools. So kind of to segue on to Portfolio Day in college, we do have an expecting graduation rate of 100%. Many students, yes, many students were accepted into very prestigious colleges such as Juilliard and Stanford. We are trying to beat our last year's $15,000 in grants. And that is all for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Shayna. So did you guys have your spring musical already, did you say? For the, or is it coming up?
So the one that is coming up is our Revolve Evolve Dance Show. Yes.
Okay, good. I want to make sure to try to come to that. And not to put you on the spot, but do you know where you're going to be going in the fall or?
Oh, so I was actually just at a UCSD campus tour, but I am debating on attending SDSC or UCSD.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. Superintendent Jackson, please provide your information report.
Thank you so much. This was a busy week. And speaking of scholarships, I'd like to begin and share with the board and our audience that I had the privilege of attending our Chancellor's Scholarship Award Event. And this is in partnership with Pradeep Kozla. Very generous. We have 118 Chancellor Scholars who receive scholarships to attend UCSD. That's 118. That's a big number. And from five of our schools, and he was gracious to add two more schools this year. We had three and now we have five. So Morris, Lincoln, Hoover, Crawford, and San Diego High. We have students who apply and if they get accepted, they receive the Chancellor Scholarship. So thank you, Pradeep, UCSD, all of the contributors, and thank you to our students. So that's first and foremost. The second is, we had Johnny Ritchie Night at Petco Park. And I'm sure I'm taking a little bit of time because many of us attended. And Johnny Ritchie, were you going to talk about Johnny Ritchie? I'm good. Okay. Well, you know, Johnny Ritchie attended San Diego High. And we know that. And the San Diego Padres designed a mural that is near the baseball field. In addition, we had some Johnny Ritchie scholars. He actually played for San Diego High School and also played in the Pacific Coast League, in the Negro League in the, I think it was 46, 48 time period, as the first black player here in San Diego. And so we honored the family. And also, in partnership with the Padres, Reality Changers, the Masons, we gave out 10,000, they gave out, I shouldn't say we, I can take credit, scholarships of $10,000. And we had two students from our district, Hasette Malero. She's from Patrick Henry. And we also had Claudia Soriano Garista from Hoover High School. So congratulations to them. In partnership with some incredible partners around our district and our community, we also had the Wellness Festival this spring on April 12. And this was well-attended. We had over 500 employees. And as we celebrate our award from the American Heart Association, this is in conjunction with that, in terms of wellness for our employees, not just focusing in on our students, but also our employees. And thank you to Jessica Marrero, who organized this. We had raffles, health screening, massage. Yes, there was massage, there were freebies, there was a live band. Thank you, Herschel, little shout-out, former classified employee. And a wellness market. So there were things to purchase, like candles. Yes, I purchased some candles. We had over 70 community partners participate with us and vendors in attendance. So thank you to Jessica Marrero and all of the district staff who helped participate and all those who participated. Exciting week, as I said, and we had incredible, an incredible day with principals at the Principal Institute, a day of learning. And we had Dr. Ivory Tolson. And he's written some great books on data. I won't get into the title because, no. It's no BS and it's no bad stats. So don't cut that snippet and have me up here saying that on the dais. Put that all together. But he really talks about humanizing our student data and really being very intentional with our work. And our focus is really about our spotlight students. Students that we have historically not seen performing. And we want to humanize them. We want to know their names. And we actually are providing data to our principals in three clicks, as says our Deputy Superintendent Dr. Bagula, and to our Board Trustees for your district, sub-district areas, and also the whole district. We know that we have just over 11,000 students that we need to get to know personally and find out what they need from us so that we can meet their needs. And I really want to thank our principals. They were engaged. They were talking to their colleagues. They started planning how they are going to connect with our students. They started to think about identifying the students. But we were able to provide them a starting point with the student names for each of their schools. And so thank you, Fobby, and thank you to our district team. And most importantly, thank you to our principals for making this a day about their learning and really engaging with us. And thank you, Dr. Tolson. We also had a great visit with our Deputy Secretary of the United States and former Superintendent San Diego Unified, Cindy Martin, who was here visiting Nippaway Elementary School and really paying attention to STEAM. And I know that our federal government has launched an initiative, You Belong in STEM. And this is going to foster a sense of belonging for us and really enhance our STEAM and STEM education. So really excited about that. Phenomenal students out at CPMA I was able to visit with. And they have a great song. And hopefully, I can get them here to sing the song for all of us. And this was impromptu. They came in and really, I got to know them and their stories. And they are beautiful young people. And I just want to put it out in the universe, if anyone knows the principal at CPMA and the student, invite them. We would love to hear them. I also had an opportunity to attend our Honor Jazz Festival, the first ever, at Hoover High School. And I do have a video if anyone wants to hear it. It was incredible, incredible. And so thank you to all the Board Trustees who attended and also the Student Board Forum. I won't talk about it because I'm sure someone else. And also, we had our ed talks at, we were at Wilson. We invited our media partners to come out. I know that it was presented as a community forum, but it was really ed talks. And it was designed for our media partners to come out and just get a sense of the work that we've been leading over the last year. And I really want to thank them and also had a chance to have a partnership in a visit. And we had the Voice of San Diego. Jacob was out with us over at Spreakles so that he can get a sense of what's happening on our schools with Trustee Patterson. And really appreciate that. And finally, our last, just as recently as today, I met with Senator Newman. Really got a chance to connect over the work regarding how we're doing in our schools and thinking about our work with. about our work with students and how they are engaging in play, recess. Got a chance to talk about how we need full funding in our base, in our LCFF, in our general fund dollars, really thinking about how we're being funded, whether it's through ADA or through attendance, and so we had a chance to talk about that. And also really engaging in a way that is going to invite him in later on this year into the summer, so that he can actually see what's happening on the ground floor. And he is the Senate Chair for the Ed Committee, and so it's really good to make those partnerships and have them see what's really happening as they make decisions at the state level. And I close with the spirit of Ubuntu. Thank you very much for my time this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Do you want to go take a picture? I'm kidding.
That was good. That was really good.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty funny.
Okay. We will now have board member reports. Let's start with trustee Nepo Messino.
Thank you, President Bazo. So about two weeks ago, at our third Police Youth Advisory Committee meeting, I had the privilege to lead a conversation with students, police, and Chief Contreras about gun violence prevention, and specifically the role of campus police in campus safety. In efforts to share our dialogue with students across the district, we recently kicked off our hashtag Know Your Rights campaign, focused on educating students about their rights on campus, seeing and knowing what that looks like, as well as strengthening trust between students and police officers. Last week, I also had the wonderful opportunity to visit Marimesa High School, where I spoke with ASB and students across campus about voting information for the upcoming Student Board Member elections, which brings me to highlight our Student Board Member in-person Candidate Forum at Crawford High School, which occurred this past Saturday. I really wanted to thank the administration at Crawford High School that made this forum possible, as well as Stacy and Lorena, who were incredible in facilitating the event. I think I can truly speak for everyone who was present when I say that I was blown away by how thorough and thoughtful the candidates were in answering questions, coming up with their campaign priorities, and articulating why they're running, why they're interested in having their voice on the Board of Education. I also want to give a big shout-out to the audience members. I think they really made the Candidate Forum absolutely, especially this year, our audience consisted of the superintendent, board members, and representatives from First Gen San Diego, our Swear Committee, Student Advisory Board, Student Equity Ambassadors, and the Wing Magazine. Thank you.
Trustee Couturiano.
Thank you. Yeah, there's just a couple of things I want to, first, that talk about the Student Board Member Forum, it was phenomenal. It was something that I've never truly seen before, and I don't think you give yourself enough credit, Leah, how amazing it was. The audience was amazing, but the planning and the professionalism of all blew me away, and I think it blew so many other candidates away. It gave us the space that we need to be the most successful in talking about our goals and priorities. As Dr. Jackson talked about, I was there at the jazz concert. It was amazing. It was amazing seeing these students that I met in third grade up on stage and seeing their growth throughout their schooling. I also had an amazing opportunity at last week's Student Advisory Board Meeting to meet with individuals at the Aspen Project to talk about what's happening on the ground and what are the priorities that students are seeing as a whole of San Diego. We rose up issues like homelessness, mental health, and many other topics that we look forward to bring to in the Greater Aspen Project. The Aspen Project is a group that works with students and teams and cohorts to create a plan of how, of solutions, and brings that forward to investors and philanthropists to see those plans come to life. And I really look forward to seeing how this improves San Diego and to see San Diego be put on the map at a national level in this way. I also, also in that Student Advisory Board Meeting, we talked with Wendy Rank Burr. Thank you so much for an amazing conversation about bridging the disconnect that often happens at the highest level up here on the Board of Education and at the ground of what students are seeing with grading policies and teaching policies with regards to standards-based learning. It was incredibly insightful for a lot of students to see, I see my teacher doing this, what's the intent behind this, and how can we make it truly intentional with our work? I also, lastly, like to thank Russ, I'm not sure if he's here, but I also like to thank Russ Sperling for his great work with our youth pride band. We had an opportunity to play at Petco Park a few weeks ago, Themes of Pride, and it was really amazing. We had a huge support from the crowd, and you know, it was truly inspirational. And we're saying, you know, although you may have had a unfortunate experience with your pride in your school, we've done a lot of great work at our school district to change that culture and create a culture of inclusivity, and it was amazing to see how much support we had for that. Thank you for my time this evening.
Thank you. Dr. Pedersen?
I'm going to save my time for F9, but I did want to say we had the first jazz honors concert, and it was phenomenal. I mean, I was really blown away. I, all our concerts are great, but this one, I walked away and thought, can I get a recording of that? Because what's that Nick, what's Nick's name? Nick Caldwell? Oh my God, that guy's going to be something. That was incredible. Yeah.
Okay. Trustee Hazen?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to meet with principals from the Canyon Hills Cluster along with Dr. Jackson, and heard that while students are doing amazing things and participating in meaningful learning opportunities during and after school, like we heard from students at Hancock, which is in the cluster, I also heard that many are struggling with serious mental health challenges and feelings of disconnection, and it was an important reminder that we must evaluate the impact of our investments, and Superintendent Jackson referred to this, in student mental health care, and also think more broadly about the opportunities we're providing that promote a sense of belonging, connection, and pro-social behaviors. And these are things like access to sports teams, which we've expanded and we'll hear more about later in the agenda, and after-school clubs and programs, because the research tells us that students experiencing adversity and toxic stress, for those students, safe, stable, nurturing relationships and environments are one of the best ways to build resilience and positive social, emotional, and health outcomes. And along those lines, since our last meeting, I had a chance to see the Patrick Henry Dance Team perform and served as a judge for the Patrick Henry ROTC Speech Competition, and in both settings, I saw and heard from students who felt a sense of belonging through the strong trusting relationships they've built with other students and with adults. And also at Patrick Henry, I'm really excited and proud to share another place where students have come together to build strong supportive relationships, and in this case, they were participating in meaningful hands-on STEM learning. So our Patriot Bots 4738, which is the school's robotics team, which works together to compete in robotics competitions, which inspire young people to be science and technology leaders and innovators. And through that team, students work together on real-world projects and prepare for STEM careers by creating a robot that competes with teams from all over the world. And this team, in front of 30,000 people at the recent Robotics World Championship in Houston, made it to the semifinals and ranked fourth out of 78 teams on the field, which I am so excited to share. This is the furthest this team has gone since it was formed in 2012, and it's the only San Diego Unified team to make it to world championships. I know often we celebrate our sports achievements or our arts achievements. I'm really excited to celebrate this achievement in robotics, and also want to mention that the team won the imagery award and want to just congratulate them for their accomplishment.
All right. Thank you, trustee Hazen, and we'll move over here to Richard Barrera.
Yeah, I just want to again echo what Matthew said about the way that the Student Candidate Forum on Saturday was conducted. I don't want to bring up too painful a memory for most people here, but if you can kind of put yourself in what you were thinking when you saw that first presidential debate a few years ago, and if you want to cleanse your system after thinking about that, you should see our Student Candidate Forums, because the design of the forum and, you know, what our candidates were able to do, they were actually trying to help lift each other up. So you were asking questions to each other about the unique experiences that each of you have, and what it did is it brought out the best in each of the candidates. And it's just, you know, it's an example, I think, for, you know, for how to conduct a democratic process in a way that makes us feel good about our possibilities. So congratulations to Leah and to Matthew and to Lorena and Stacy for putting that together. I also hope I'm not stealing anybody's thunder, but we just got word today from Acacia and Kimberly Moore that San Diego Unified is one of 12 districts statewide to be awarded a first round of grants from the California Teacher Credential Commission that allow us, will allow us to pay student teachers in a select group of student teachers in targeted schools, in targeted areas, which is so critical to the work that we're trying to do to build a pipeline of future teachers, because as trustee Whitehurst Payne can tell us, one of the great inequities in people who are preparing to become teachers is if student teaching is not a paid position, which it's not, you know, for most people, it means the only people who can do it are people who can afford to do it. And so this is going to give us the opportunity to actually have student teachers that we want to encourage to become, you know, future educators, pay them, and it's a first step in our overall teacher pipeline effort. So congratulations to the whole team that worked on that.
Thank you. Thank you, and trustee Dr. Whitehurst Payne.
Thank you. And I must say that I could say ditto to everything you said about Leah and the student forum. It was outstanding. I was really impressed, and I felt very comfortable that any one of those students would do well as a trustee. And to all the things that Dr. Jackson and everyone else articulated, I say ditto to them, because it was probably at some of them. But I just want to quickly just run through the things that Melissa put together for me. The Rady, let's see, the Rady Shell, we didn't mention that. Our students had the opportunity again to go down to the Rady Shell, and that's highlighted. I don't know, I listen to people talking about the fact that they don't have any place to go or anything to do, but if you just hook up with San Diego Unified, we have a lot of things going on. You can go to the Rady's, Rady Shell, and sit out on the water and listen to all the wonderful music that our children have really practiced over and over again. And I just happened to catch the billboard there for one of the schools, but I mean, all of our, we had about eight or nine schools performing, so look for it on our website next year, and you can catch that. The Ocean Discovery Institute, I was asked to have dinner with the scientists and residents. So that was a wonderful opportunity, and it was a mixed-generation event there. We had fun checking each other on our generations and what's happening with Gen Z's and X's and whatever, whatever the generation was. And then I want to take a moment to talk about Knox. I was truly impressed with the play that they did, The Lion King, and I asked whether or not they were going to SCPA, and they said, oh, no, we can do our own. But I would advise you, if you can, if you can get involved in seeing what they're doing, they put their own nice play on of The Lion King, and I was very proud of them. And then you see Rob Machado, I think it is, his foundation gave the Penn School water bottles. They plan to give all the students in San Diego Unified water bottles that they can use to be very healthy and all of that environmentally friendly and so forth. So some of you may know Rob Machado. He's a surfer here in San Diego County, but his foundation is a one given, yeah, that surfing, yeah, surfer up in Carter, a surfer. But he's got a foundation, and they tell me he's very famous. He's a very nice person. Yes, and then Gina Gienzerro has been the Executive Director of DEEP, and Gina is now retired from that assignment. But for the schools involved, and I want to think, publicly thank Dr. Fabiola Bagula, because she's agreed to do a pilot program with the DEEP schools so that they can implement DEEP fully, and there's a reading methodology they have, so we're going to be focusing on those four schools, Encanto, let's see, Webster, Choice View, and Johnson. So we're really excited about that, and that was Kathleen and her hat that day, which was a nice segue to Encanto, because we finished that long day, it was a long day, with the community celebration. And again, I want to thank Dr. Fabi and Superintendent for coming out to that event, but it was a lot of fun and the community was involved. They have engaged the businesses and churches around that community so that they're a part of that community. When they needed their basketball or some kind of sport net redone, I think there were a group of ministers there trying to put it back together again. So I just want to thank them for all their support. And then finally, the middle and high school honors jazz concert. We have a picture there of, I believe that was the middle school one, is that middle school at the back? And I just want to say, we have a lot of things going on in this district. Come out and see them. And I also want to thank Russ Sperling. We had lunch with Anna Ree Haney, and some of you may know her. She's getting up in years, but she wanted us to be sure to use those instruments that are stored away. She says, get them out so that students can use them to practice on them. So I want to thank her and thank all of you for listening to this. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dr. Whitehurst Payne. And yeah, everyone here talked about all the things I was going to talk about, but I'll delve in a little bit deeper. When I was part of the visit with Cindy Martin to Nippaway Elementary, and I hadn't seen her since she went off to, well, I guess I had seen her last year at the VAPA Foundation fundraiser, but I hadn't really had an opportunity to speak with her, and so that was exciting. She had her whole little group that goes with her everywhere, and a confidential assistant, I guess you get that when you work in DC as the Deputy Secretary of Education. So that was kind of exciting. We got to talk about STEAM and not only what all the amazing things they're doing at Nippaway, but how we can lift that up across the district and what they're doing across the country, because as Dr. Whitehurst Payne pointed out while we were there, you know, Nippaway is a beautiful school and our newest, and, but how are we doing this, how are we getting this into all of our schools so all of our kids can participate more? So that was a wonderful conversation, and of course, the student-led, the candidate panel was really impressive. Like, I just went thinking, you know, it'll be interesting to hear, you know, from the candidates. But not only were they talking about, you know, what they've done within their school from perspective of maybe like ASB events and things like that, but we talked even deeper about, you know, how are you getting those kids involved that are maybe like having mental health concerns, or that kid in the back of the room? And they had some really thoughtful answers, and all five candidates were extremely impressive in talking about working with, you know, one of them was an English language learner and some of her challenges, and so it was really interesting to see all of their unique perspectives and all very impressive candidates. Finally, the honors jazz band concert was, of course, amazing. The guy that Dr. Pedersen alluded to, the saxophonist, they're like, if you closed your eyes, if you didn't know was a high school student, you would have just thought you were at like a professional performance. I mean, it was that good. From SCPA, I wanted to give a shout-out to SCPA, and just all the students were amazing, and we're hoping to get more students from different parts of the district next year and really grow that program in addition to all of our other honor programs. And I just want to do a shameless plug, because I am on the VAPA Foundation, that if you liked that performance or you heard about it, we can have more of that. We have a big fundraiser for VAPA Foundation coming up. It's called the Beyond Brilliance Bash. It's going to take place Saturday, May 20th, at the Conrad Prebus Concert Hall in La Jolla. And last year was the first year, and it was And last year was the first year and it was amazing. We're going to have performances from local, different schools are going to be performing and silent and live auction items and you can get your tickets at vapafoundation.org. It's going to be an incredible evening and we're actually going to be celebrating Dr. Lamont Jackson at that event as well. So that's what it says right here, celebrating Dr. Jackson. Oh, he didn't know, okay. I guess it was a surprise. I don't know. It's, it's on the invitation. So I hope you all can join us and the funding from this will help, helps to fund programs like the honors jazz band, but also working with our, especially trying to target our priority schools, our black and brown communities that aren't getting a lot of, aren't able to get a lot of arts and music in their, you know, in their day, being able to go, partner with groups like Old Globe, you know, all, all the different nonprofits that can come in and share creative and performing arts with our students. So I hope you'll join us at that.
Speaking of shameless plug. Yes, so tomorrow we have, if you are unable to make our first student board member candidate forum, we have a hybrid forum. Tomorrow, I believe that starts at 5:00 PM and ends at 6:00 PM and, and ends at 7:30 PM. So feel free to stop by. We'll have a Zoom link that should be available to everyone, but if you're interested in meeting the candidates in person, we will be at the EOC. So feel free to come here. It'll be the same location, just in a different room. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Nepomacino. Okay, moving on. We will now consider item E1, which is the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan, and I'm going to have Dr. Jackson and staff present the item.
Thank you, President Baso. At this time, I'd like to invite our senior director of Extended Learning Opportunities, Ms. Toby Pace, if she could come forward and present the item. Thank you very much. And I did, I did know about the VAPA. I'm honored.
Oh.
Teasing.
That's pretty cool. Very exciting.
Welcome Toby Pace.
All right. Well, good evening, board members and Dr. Jackson. Today I am here, this evening I am here to give you an overview of our ELOP plan. And it's important to note that this plan is, plan is new as of 2022. Previously to this year, we were funded out of ELOG. And so tonight I'm going to give you an overview of the ELOP funding program plan and then ask for your approval of this plan as I go through these slides. So tonight's presentation will provide the ELO district-wide overview inclusive of the CDE Quality Program Standards and Requirements. Additionally, I'll be providing a high level of overview of our program funding, our summer site locations, and district partnerships, how we intend to measure that impact. At the conclusion of this presentation, I'm requesting that the board take action to approve the ELOP plan. The images on the right of this screen is the high-level overview of everything we do here in San Diego Unified for our ELO, our Extended Learning Opportunities. So really just thinking anything outside of the instructional day for all of our students, UTK through 12. I put together, my team has put together the full overview of every district site and it's actually hyperlink to the top. This is just a screenshot of all of the Extended Learning Opportunities programs at each one of the sites, inclusive of our ongoing partnerships with all other departments. So it's important to note that our ELO team works closely with our community schools. We work closely with our Office of Graduation and it's also important to note on the top, it shows the actual budget source. So you'll see ELOP and then there's different budget sources as you go into that document. But it's a great resource to show all of our district schools, elementary, middle, high school, and our atypical schools and how we partner to serve them with our ELO across Our next slide is our California Department of Education Quality Standards. So as you can see here and from the links included in my presentation, there are 12 quality standards that need to be directly addressed in the ELOP plan that we're requesting approval for tonight. Some of these are very self-explanatory, like safe, supportive, inclusive environment. Some of them have some specifics that have been called out, but each one of these 12 standards, our team has addressed through the ELOP plan and we're going to go through those in a moment. So high level, I'm not going to read through all the details of these, but the high level is that the, the California Department of Ed is requiring us to give priority to what we call unduplicated students. So it's a wonderful opportunity for us in every one of these programs, such as middle school sports, summer Level Up, primetime. We always offer a priority registration to our students who are enrolled in our district, clarified, defined as an English learner by the state, multi-education learner, as well as eligible for free and reduced lunch or as foster youth. In addition to the state's requirements, our district has also added on the priority students of our students with IEPs and 504s as well to this. It's really important to note that we have to offer, one of the requirements for this program grant is we have to offer it for a minimum of 30 days outside of the regular school year. And of those 30 days outside, it has to be a minimum of nine hours a day. So in the next few slides, I'm going to go over how we're offering that. And this again is new from the state this year. And so there's some specific requirements and how we had to shift a little bit of our summer programming to ensure that we qualified for this grant and we really want to keep working on this grant and receiving that. The next slide has continued program requirements. These are all on the CDE website, but the high-level ones I want to point out to you all tonight is the importance of the integration of academic and enrichment opportunities. So this is not just childcare or babysitting. We really want to make these programs meaningful. We partner right now through, one of those standards, standard seven, is to ensure that everyone who works with our students through our ELO program have the minimum qualifications of an instructional aide, which is 48 units of college credits. Or we also offer a waiver called the CAPE, the California Assistant Proficiency Exam. And so with this plan, we've written out the attachment on the last slide that we're going to be asking for approval on that addresses all of these 12 standards in that attached plan. The other thing that's important to note is it must be brought back to the board every three years, but I know for us, we're reviewing it all the time. So we will be reviewing it yearly, monthly, and this is a part of our plan that I'll share in the next few slides. So for us here in San Diego Unified School District, this fiscal year, we've been allocated 56.2 million to allocate specifically anything in Extended Learning Opportunities. And so continuing for this present year, you'll see this pie graph. And what we've done specifically, and as trustee Hazen shared, we target anything to build the social emotional learning. So one of the smaller items that we've allocated is a bridging program. We're meeting, I met last week with our middle school principals, meeting this Friday with our elementary principals, and then we're working with our high school principals. A bridging program that really integrates welcoming kids to our school. So we're allocating money per child for every site to create a welcoming, belonging environment in that bridging program. And then there's other, we're also, as you know, working with our middle school athletics at every single middle school site, offering three different seasons of middle school sports for our students in middle school. And we're super excited. I talked to Scott Yusti this morning and we're super excited to highlight that currently our flag football is going on the spring session. So we have boys and girls flag football and he, he said, this is the first time, this is our goal. We have our high school football coaches coaching the middle school level. So really building that continuity of sports and just partnering together. So again, another opportunity for our students to build that competency outside of school. We are also working with Hay Tutter, Franklin Covey, and the Caesar Chavez Foundation to work on the specific curriculum for our summer because we want the weeks of summer school, which I'm going to talk about in a moment, to be engaging for all of our students. And so we're working closely with them. The Caesar Chavez Foundation, not to be mistaken for the Caesar Service Club, who we're also partnering with, but the Caesar Chavez Foundation is out of LA. And we work closely with them because they're actually creating the ELA, English Language Arts Curriculum for our UTK through eight with a progress, I'm sorry, a project-based learning approach. So it's been exciting to say, let's make summer school fun, engaging, academic, but also coming from a lens of, hey, we don't want to discourage kids from going five more weeks, we want to encourage that. And then we're also partnering with Franklin Covey on the SEL, Social Emotional Learning Curriculum, where they're using a program called LEAD IT, where we're building that in and partnering with a pilot at both Canyon Hills and Miramesa High School, where we're actually going to put some of our, we have 120 juniors and seniors partnering with Kimberly Moore and the Teach LEAD pilot to have students go through a leadership institute and then go for five days and then go to the elementary schools in those two areas in the cluster of Canyon Hills and Miramesa with the hope of gathering input before middle and after to expand this for next summer. So we're starting small with a couple of schools with Mr. Sabans and Ms. Renfree and just really looking at how we can expand that opportunity so that our high school juniors and seniors can learn about themselves as a leader and share that back with the students in that elementary cluster to also partner with that pipeline as well. The second largest two tabs on here is really our summer school. And we divide it up in two because we have, one, we have a partnership with our Level Up. Level Up is our partnership with the San Diego Foundation and we work closely with them because we meet two times a week with my department to talk about the partnership of community-based organizations. We say CBOs. So we work closely with over, right now we have partnered with over 100 different CBOs from UTK through 12 to offer enrichment for all nine weeks of summer. So the enrichment program is exciting. Text went out two weeks early to all of our priority students, as I mentioned before, and now it is open to the general enrollment of all students. We are getting filled and so we're looking to expand even more. We're actually adding a couple other enrichment courses and also exploring partnerships with the YMCA and ways to offer to other families who, if those classes are closed or those enrichment courses are closed, how can we expand that? So that's really one of our big goals in the enrichment umbrella. The second pie chart for summer is our academic ESY. And I say that inclusively because academics, even though it's fun and engaging, academics can be engaging and fun and really enriching. And that's the curriculum I'm talking about for the Caesar Chavez Foundation, the SEL with Franklin Covey, and with our very own amazing math department. So we're working on that curriculum and serving this summer, students the longest summer school for ESY and academics, five weeks for five hours a day. So it used to be only four weeks and only three to four hours a day. We're expanding that learning day. Remember those grant requirements of nine hours? So we have that five-hour, eight-to-one program offered at, I'll show you the sites on the next slide, but I get excited about this. Five hours of academic and inclusive of full, including our students who are in the mild mod, receiving program services, mod severe or low incidence at all of these sites. And then at one o'clock, what we've done partnering with the foundation and other enrichment vendors, from one to five, we're offering the afternoon enrichment. So every single one of our open summer sites has academic, eight-to-one, some of them are 9:30 to 2:30, and then four more hours of enrichment to ensure that we follow that guideline specifically of that minimum of nine hours, obviously, which is also a win-win because we are offering for our SDA members a full, a full day of pay for that. So they're working and we're honoring their work by saying, you're working with our students five hours a day, we're providing professional development for them, we're building in prep time for all of our SDA members. In addition, we are also offering eight hours for all of our other para's, our OTBS, because why? We have kids on our campus for nine hours a day. And so we want to make sure the continuity of care, it's not two separate programs, it's integrated. In addition, all of our open UTK eight sites also have a primetime program open from one to 5:30. Again, require, giving options for families if they want to do enrichment or if they want to be involved in our primetime program. So we have all that available. So that's the second largest chunk of our, our hope to expand that. And then lastly, our priority on primetime expansion. So primetime is our district umbrella for offering before and after care for all of our district students. Currently, there's 144 UTK, so elementary and middle school sites. Currently, as of right now, we have 117 of those sites that have primetime. August, we're interviewing and going through a whole process of having vendors come and meet with the SGT, the family members, with the principals. We're actually hosting interviews at the San Diego Office of Education for the five other sites so that in August, we're going to have 125 out of the 144 sites will be primetime. So as you can see, there's a 19, and, and those sites are all listed on that previous one, there's a 19 school gap that we really want to target. So we have three different options that our team is working on, but you'll see that, that chunk of 40% of our allocation is going for next year to expand the primetime program at sites in addition to shorten the waitlist. So we also have waitlists at some of our primetime sites and I'm going to give you the current update on our waitlist because I'm really excited about this. We, over the past two months, we've actually been able to reduce our waitlist and get 1,500 new students, 1,491 is the exact number, by partnering with other vendors. So we've partnered with other vendors to bring in this supervision because staffing as well as facility space has been somewhat of a challenge. So we are really targeting that. So that's really our main buckets that we're focusing on as an ELOP, again, always ensuring that we're following those guidelines. So on this next slide, as I mentioned, I'm going to go in specifically to the summer sites. And in addition, in front of you, you have a map put together by some of the feedback because I listened to the, going back to September 13th last year, Dr. Roberson did a full overview of the ELO program. And some of the feedback I heard from board members was really important to ensure that we have sites in every cluster and accessibility for each one. So there's, there's two things here I want to point out is we have 43 elementary schools, 11 middle schools, 13 high schools, and nine atypical schools, total of 75 schools that we've opened for the summer programming. With this, we also, like I mentioned, we have primetime at all the UTK eight sites and we have enrichment opportunities at all of these open sites. If you are interested, like me, I love seeing it by cluster. There's actually a hyperlink at the, at the bottom as well that shows by cluster which sites are open and closed. We went through a process, September and October, meeting with all principals at every level, gathering their input, also meeting with transportation, also meeting with facilities, which sites are going through whole site modernization. So you might be looking and saying, well, why is Miramesa High School closed? Don't worry, they're getting a whole modernization, we're very excited. And our ELO team worked closely with transportation and we're providing shuttle services. So Miramesa, there's four main high schools that are closed for the summer, but we're working closely to provide two kind of shuttle transportations with our team for any students who want that credit recovery, credit acceleration, and all of those kind of things. So our four high schools that are open are SCPA, I'm sorry, closed, SCPA, Miramesa High School, Mission Bay, and Morris. Those are our four that are closed, going through the full revamping. But we've also offered transportation from that site to the other sites. And there's tons of details on those slides, but I just wanted to make sure, to me, one of the important things coming into my new role and my new leadership in this is to make sure that every child has access and that it's equitable. And so we looked at all the past, and as you know, this is the third year we're going into summer for all. I looked at the past trends and which sites had to close down last minute and we created a proactive plan to ensure that these were all open, at least not open, that there was accessible to all children in every cluster. And all of this would not be possible without our amazing partnerships. So we have two slides on partnerships, you can see them listed here. This is just a small group of them. I do want to highlight that currently primetime partners, the before and after school and in the summer, we're working, we have an ongoing contract with the YMCA, ARC, Harmonium, and Say San Diego. We are currently interviewing and asking for other outside vendors if they want to become a primetime partner to come through the process. We're currently working with three other team members that would like to become a primetime partner, offering at various schools. And we've created a process, working closely with Christiana Trout-Mcfee, to interview them and intake and say, hey, these are the requirements, we want to make sure that our kids are safe. We want to make sure that our kids are safe, that there's an attendance policy, that you follow district protocol when you're on our district campuses, but yes, please come. So if you're out there and you're other people interested in partnering with us, please come my way, send me an email. We would love to continue that. The other parts of this, it's not just the YMCA, ARC, Harmonium, and Say. We also have partnerships that come to the schools. So at some of our schools, we have Hey Tutor working with students. We have DEEP working with after-school students, Super Soccer Stars. So we really give variety and choice to all of our principals who then take it to their SGT, who then bring in other additional partners. The second slide is specific to our summer, and like I said, there's over 100, so I couldn't get all the logos on here, but I did want to highlight that this is where we're working closely with the Caesar Chavez Service Club. We're working with Quest, Hey Tutor, all of these, working through Girls Who Code, and really the VAPA Foundation we're working closely with. We're working with, also with CCTE, and hiring our own teachers to really enrich the opportunities for all of our students. So that is a key component, and you'll see that that is tied in specifically to our standards in, as well as encouraging that community partnership. So really important to the California Department of Ed as well as to the board, it is very important, standards nine, 10, 11, and 12 are all on measuring impact. So making sure that we're sustainable, so that we are using these different strategies here to measure what we are doing, how we are doing it, the efficiency, the effectiveness, and then pivoting based on that data. So when I was recently hired back in October, I looked at all of the previous data, and now that we have not only the request, but the importance of the audit that is new to us, it's coming out on July 1st for the ELOP Plan. So just remember, the ELOP Plan is what I'm asking for approval on tonight that covers those 12 standards. I'm sure you've had a moment to look at it, but I have attached it here as well. One of the key components is measuring that impact. Is it, is it working? That street data as well as that hard data of looking at specific FAS scores, we're looking at our students who did attend. So I work closely with Erica Simmons and our Assessment Services, really kind of creating partnerships with all different departments because what we're trying to do is serve all of our district students. We're also monitoring attendance. We're monitoring waitlists because we do have waitlists for those Level Up programs right now. How can we expand that? What can we do differently? I know a big change from last year to this year was we only allowed one Level Up program per child per district. That was great because everyone, it was fair share. However, it didn't target our students who needed that over the summer. So this year, we gave the opportunity for families to sign up for the full nine weeks. We're looking at that and saying, mm, wow, we filled up really quick. How can we mitigate that? So we're always open to feedback. We're always looking at that. We're also working with the Caesar Chavez Foundation on our Growth Mindset Survey. We're using some pre and post data. They're also doing a writing survey. So really just looking at this, obviously, I don't have the data for you yet. This is what we're setting in place for this upcoming summer. But my hope is when I come back to share the results of our summer data with you in October, that I'll be able to share some of these results and elicit feedback. So with that said, this is the final slide, and I will open up for questions, but this is that plan that I had mentioned. This is directly from the California Department of Ed's template for ELOP, and we're working on an ELOP networking plan. And so we're requesting that the board consider approval of this plan moving forward. So with that, I will stop and pause and open it up for questions. Yes?
Thank you, Toby. That was very thorough, and I just want to say, I know we have a lot of questions here, but I'm just so impressed with all you've done the short time you've been here, and you've done an incredible job.
Thank you, Sabrina.
And you're doing a lot of exciting work, and it's going to really impact our students in such a positive way. It already is, but can, you know, so, so thank you, and this is exciting. Okay, with that, I'm going to open it up. Doctor, trustee Dr. Pedersen.
Thanks. And I think Shane has a more specific question about this, but I'm going to ask a broader question about. So thank you so much. This is, I used to call it ELOP, but I'll take ELOP. Obviously, this is a huge, huge deal, and I'm very excited about it. I have a specific question about the Hey Tutor portion. I think back in, in December, we allocated $21 million, which is a pretty sizable chunk of change, a breathtaking chunk of change. But it was because we all believed that high dosage tutoring is as close as we get to a silver bullet on, on closing the achievement gap and closing the pandemic gap. And so one of my, I have two questions related to that, which is we only see for spring 2023, six sites.
Eight.
What?
Oh, spring, right now?
Spring.
Eight.
Okay.
Okay.
I only got six, but, but yeah.
Sorry.
I'll take your word for it. And then we see 19 possible fall. And for spring, we see only elementary school, but maybe those two I missed are middle school, but I didn't see that. And no middle, middle and high for spring, and then we only see one for middle proposed for, for fall, and then no high school for fall. And so my first question is, how do we, obviously, it's challenging to get those things stood up. We only did, we only allocated that back in, in December. So number one is, how do we get more sites with high dosage tutoring? And the second question, I've heard some feedback that it's, it is currently coupled with primetime, but there, one way that we could free up or allocate more of those resources that we, implement more of the resources we allocated back in December is to uncouple it, well, have it going to primetime, but also uncouple it so that we could have Hey Tutor going to folks that maybe weren't, needed those services, but they weren't accessing primetime. So those are the two questions. How can we accelerate our investments in high dosage tutoring through Hey Tutor? And number two, how can, is it possible to uncouple it so that we're also providing it to non-primetime students?
Thank you, trustee Patterson. This is really a great question, and it is something that I've been working closely with. I also meet with them weekly, and we did start slow with implementing the eight schools, and I apologize if they're not on there. But we started with the eight schools that were next up for primetime in a partnership to say, let's offer. So there were, those eight schools that are actually going to be turning into primetime offerings, we said, let's pilot this as a primetime, not under that umbrella yet, but they offered enrichment and HDT, high dosage tutoring, which we know, research says, that's so important. So we started that. We actually, I gathered those eight principals, and we had a meeting with Hey Tutor. There were a lot of questions, and they wanted, we tried to work closely with Hey Tutor, saying, can we offer them as one of those four vendors? And we actually offered them to partner with us as a primetime partner to include that enrichment. Unfortunately, they declined that offer, and we have that from the Hey Tutor team. They don't want to be a part of the primetime. They want to specifically focus in on tutoring, which is awesome, and that's great. And so we've pivoted because we saw it as a win-win originally, but there wasn't the component of safety, the attendance, the accountability that fit that. So specifically for UTK eight, what we were trying to do is hit those, you know, like I said, there's 117 schools. We were trying to hit those other eight and then the 19. So what we did two weeks ago, I opened it up to the other 19 that don't have primetime and did exactly that. So I held an interest list, and four of the 19 principals showed up to my meeting and said, oh, yes, free tutoring? And I said, yes, let's do it. Let's make it happen. So I had a meeting, and I actually was just with Dr. Nisi Watkins, and we went through these meetings. So I have four principals that are actually trying this, and we're looking to pilot just the tutoring. Again, it has to be specifically after school because that's our grant requirement. So that's what I'm going to lead into with the high school. So the high school that, I believe it was seven million out of ELOP, there was various funding sources. Dr. Roberson's working closely, and we're just starting that because they can actually service students during the school day. So with that said, I know we are starting that, and that has recently started, but I will refer to my colleague on which schools. That is really recent because it's kind of moving something, we know it's important, and we're hoping to expand it, so.
Very cool. And I just want to flag, I focus on the academic side of high dosage tutoring, but I've seen in my own family, I've seen the way in which high dosage tutoring is not just about academics. It's about forming a caring relationship with adults.
Exactly.
Thinking about the way you think and feel, and really the emotional, the socio-emotional results are also incredible out of high dosage tutoring.
Huge, huge. Thank you.
You're good?
Yes.
All right. Other questions? Trustee Barrera.
Yeah, I've got a few. First, but first, we'll make a motion to approve the.
Thank you. I forget, forget that part. Motion, and then we have a second by trustee Waiters-Pain. Okay?
Right. So just building quickly on the tutoring, do we anticipate that we are going to have money left over in the contract that we've already approved that would allow us to continue to expand the program?
Yes, and so, good question, because on that slide, you'll see there's a reduction. We had originally seven million because we were hoping to partner with them as a primetime partner. So we reduced it, I don't see the exact, it's, is it three and a half million? So we still want to expand it, but we need to reserve that and shift it over because we need to provide nine hours of childcare at those other 19 sites. And unfortunately, that wasn't what the Hey Tutor team wanted to continue with, but we still know that HDT, high dosage tutoring, is important.
Yeah.
So we did reduce that specifically.
Yeah. Because I would think that if, if in the end, we still have, you know, capacity within the contract that we've already approved, I mean, obviously, it's, it makes sense, you know, to kind of put the word out to principals and see who's interested, but I'm just kind of wondering, I think we're all bought in, you know, to the concept of high dosage tutoring. So maybe we don't leave it completely up to which principals, you know, jumped in, especially since it's after school.
So the, so high dosage tutoring with Hey Tutor is specific?
Yes.
And so what we do with primetime, we actually pay our credential teachers an hourly rate?
Yes.
And so that's the shift over is to focus on them doing the one-to-three ratio?
Yes.
And so we're still encouraging high dosage tutoring, it's just changing kind of the who's doing the high dosage tutoring.
Okay.
So we were thinking and getting feedback, saying it's wonderful to give this opportunity to credential teachers who have their degrees in this field specifically and know their kids at their site.
Yeah.
So that's one thing. In addition, those other 19 schools, the reason there was a little hesitation on the 19, they're like, Toby, it's April, and you want to do it right now? And I said, yes, this is open, it's free. So we did get them to, to commit to trying it on, four of them.
Yeah.
But because of the late time, I think that was one of.
Maybe others will pick it up in the fall.
Well, and I'm, and I'm saying that we need to choose one. I'm with you on that. I think it is important for all of our kids.
Okay.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just get clarification? So it's Hey Tutor is, and then primetime is offering tutoring as well, did you say?
So yes, so, yes, under primetime, there's various partnerships. They partner with the AARP. We have some sites that the seniors come in and they tutor with the students in small group and build those relationships. Hey Tutor, we love because they have a great curriculum that they work on based on the standards. We also, primetime pays directly to our credential teachers. That's one of the offerings on the menu of choices to the principal and the SGT. Hey, do you want sports? Do you want a basketball camp? Do you want tutoring from your credential teachers? You can pick many of those, and so that's the intention behind that. So yes, tutoring does get offered through primetime as well.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So then, just a couple of other things. So we know that a lot of our Level Up partners who are working with us in the summer would like to have school year programs. Is that kind of what the thinking is with the expansion of primetime and inviting some of, okay?
Exactly. Because we want to build a robust after-school program where they partner in under the primetime. They just have to follow the security and safety guidelines, so that's why we're doing that. But yes, exactly.
But they could offer their programs as one of the.
Exactly. Send them my way.
Yeah, that's great. And then just the last, so the, the requirement of 48 units, does that create a problem when we have programs that, for instance, want to use current high school students or even students, you know, that recently graduated as part of their, you know, so peer tutoring, peer counseling, all of the different things that our students could do who might not yet have the 48 units?
Yes, specifically with the internships, it does. So we, we are, they're in addition to the ratio. So we are hiring the credential teachers. They're going to go push in and have that relationship, teach the SEL units at the elementary schools. But it is something at the state level, I know they're looking at. How do we look at some of those requirements that might be barriers?
Yeah.
And how can we remove those?
Yes, great. Thank you, Toby.
Oh, yeah.
Great work.
For sure.
Dr. Waiters-Pain?
I think the C best at one time, they could take that, and if they pass that, that would demonstrate. And high school students, we advise to take it.
Yeah.
Because then you don't have to worry about it later.
Yeah.
Pass it, and that's it.
Thank you. Anyone? Vice President Hayes?
Yes, continuing on the high dosage tutoring, Trey and I have some questions. And also, thank you for a plan. Love how everything is outlined in alignment with the state's standards. It's really helpful. In terms of Hey Tutor, I'm curious, so what I saw, and I may have read it wrong, is it looks like, so of the eight schools, it doesn't look like any of them are in historically underserved communities or south of the eight. And so I was trying to understand that. I know you shared that maybe there is other tutoring happening in some of those schools. I was just curious why the schools who are participating are participating based on sort of our priority students in schools.
I got you. Yes, that was the original intent, was expanding primetime at those eight schools to get to the full offering because there are students at those schools. Those eight were the next eight that had the highest number of unduplicated students. That's why those were selected, and they currently didn't have primetime. So that's why we tried to pilot it starting February as a win-win to try and create that. What we're also looking at is putting it in all the other schools as an add-on to primetime. So that's what we're hoping to do. We were trying to create that situation where they were running enrichment and high dosage, but that's our intent, is to get them at all elementary, middle, that would be out of ELOP. But I do know that they're partnering, like I said, with some high schools and actually doing peer tutoring, high school tutoring during class time. So we are targeting all of the schools. We're going to get that as an option over the summer.
Okay, so just so I'm, so the goal is that all schools are offering.
Some sort of tutoring.
Some sort of tutoring.
Yes.
I think one of the things I'd love to see as we're looking at these different tutoring options is having some data on which work best.
Agreed.
So if that's not part of the plan, I think for us to know, you know, what are the results we see when it's Hey Tutor or one of the other options, right? Because as trustee Pedersen mentioned, we're spending a lot of money, and we need to know if those dollars are the best way to achieve the results we want to see for students. I'm also wondering, so appreciate the measuring impact. Do we have goals, so specific metrics? So I see how we're measuring impact, but what are we hoping to see? How do we know if we're successful?
Right now, we're creating those surveys, so I don't have the answer to that, but I can get back to you. Some of them are specifically written into our strategic plan, measuring growth of certain percentages, but we haven't fully developed those. So I'll, my hope is to bring that back to you for our meeting in October and share that.
Fantastic.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. And I think one of the things, and you and I actually spoke, I think, a little bit ago about this shared goal of aligning what's happening during the school day with after school. And I'm wondering if there's any work being done at the sites to look at SPSA goals and goals of after-school providers and make sure there's alignment there, right? Because in these after-school hours, we're talking about many hours of learning, really this value add to what's happening during the school day. And so I think it's really important that we make sure our primetime providers, any of our after-school providers, understand what that school is focused on, the greatest needs of those students, and how we can think about it more holistically. And then, I guess I'm also curious, I saw, you know, we have, you know, this investment in Leader and Me. What results are we seeing for that?
Yeah, I have, we do, we have over 70 schools currently participating, and actually, just the month of April is the MRA. So it's called the Measurable Results Assessment, and I'm happy to share that with you guys. I could even just print it out because it's pretty exciting. It surveys all students, teachers, and families, and you get a result in the core areas of leadership, culture, and academics. And every school gets to pick a specific area of academics, inclusive of ELA and math, and that feedback is there. So once that closes, April, end of April, I'm getting those results, and I can put together that and share that with the whole team.
That would be great. And is there a goal, is there something that we want to see so we know sort of like what we're, what we're striving for in terms of those numbers?
In each of the areas, there's specific goals. In each of the areas, there's specific goals. It's kind of like the check survey, if you remember.
Right, yeah.
Like it has specific questions around, how do I feel like I belong? Where can I, do I have a trusted adult? It's very aligned to that. So the specific data I can pull for you guys after it closes at the end of the month.
Perfect. And then, lastly, it's a question, so I know, you know, we talked about this huge demand for summer programs and enrichment. Is there an opportunity for us to offer those things in a fee-based way for families who might have the ability to pay something towards it, to sort of stretch our limited dollars a little further and offer more?
I'm definitely looking at exploring that, because that's exactly the issue we're having right now, is there's a high demand, and we're filling up those spots with the, the money that we have. And so looking at that, partnering with our vendors that we have, the CBOs, so we're exploring that. But I love that idea.
Very good. Thank you.
Dr. Jackson?
Thank you, Toby. And I do want to just mention, as trustee Barrera said, you know, our intention has been to really get more extended learning during the school year. So I think that's a real important piece. And that ties into our model around making sure that school sites determine what is needed for their schools, and we're able to support that. I think that's, that's critical. Moving away from us doing to the schools versus them determining what's needed, when it's needed, how it's needed, and then we providing that support. So I want to thank you for the work, and I know that we have taken advantage of an opportunity to extend during the, the summer months. But we also know that during the school year, connected to the learning that is happening real-time for students, is the most effective. So I just want to remind us of that as we, as we shift.
Dr. Whitehurst Payne?
I, I just want to say that earlier I talked about Knox School and what I saw last week when I was there, when the students were doing the play. They had rehearsed on weekends after school. They were engaged, they were excited, the community was excited that they were doing this. I think it's going to take something other than traditional, sit down and do some tutoring. That's not going to work in certain communities. You need to engage the students and give them an opportunity and a reason to learn. When I visit Knox also with the music department, the teacher, the same instructor, by the way, had the beginning class, and they were learning instruments, and that's why I want to connect Anne Marie Haney and the students there, because they, they didn't have them at home. They had to come to the school, to the class, and then put them together, and then have instruction. So if we really mean that we want equity across the board, it's not just all sitting down with paper and pencil. There are some other things. There's, there are, there's the theater, there's the music, on and on and on and on. And that's a segue, just like the coach came here and told us about San Diego, about Lincoln High School. He said all of his students were enrolled in the college or university for next year, for those who are graduating, because he used sports as the hook to say, I want to see your grades. I want to see how you're doing. And he was a caring adult for them to want to be there and do something, so. You weren't here, Toby, I don't think, with all those presentations, but a lot's going on with that.
Yeah.
And we just want to be sure that we have our teachers engaged with our students to encourage them, to motivate them to want to learn, and then they'll do it. They will perform.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to just lift up your work that you're doing, the pilot you mentioned that you're going to be doing with the high school students that are going to be going to the elementary school, because as we saw last year, we did a even smaller pilot of that for Hickman Elementary last year. And we had so many high school students that came out and enjoyed it so much, they came back like the next week, and they, you know, and they, and just the connection they had with the, the young kids, and, you know, I think it's more exciting sometimes for them to see, work with, the elementary, to work with high school students and, you know, the, the teachers, though, the teachers are old, but the, you know, elementary, high school students are, you know, cool. So I love that idea. And also, I want to even encourage those students, while we have them with us, the high school students, to get them involved in the teacher pipeline, so that, you know, that would be my ultimate goal, is like, no, we're not going to, after you're done with this program this summer, we still want to keep you and, you know, encourage them to go into teaching, and then maybe coming back and teaching in their own community, so.
And I think Kim...
Oh, sorry.
Kim Moore over there.
Sorry, got excited there. Trustee Couturiano?
Yeah, I just want to start, amazing presentation. It was clear, concise, and it was great. I just had one really small, quick question. You use the language "unduplicated" to refer to students that are high priority and that we really want to reach. Is there a specific, I've, I've never heard the term before, is there a specific reasoning behind that language?
Yeah, it's specifically from the California Department of Ed Code. It's called "unduplicated," it's defined in there. We like to say, you know, it's just all children, and we want to be inclusive. We actually struggled with that language a little bit, then priority students, well, why is my child not a priority student? So we're really trying to be cognizant of that. But the specific word "unduplicated" comes directly from the California Department of Ed, the Ed Code in there for that qualification, based on the grant.
And it's free, reduced lunch, English learners?
Free, reduced lunch, English learners, those are the three qualifiers. Homeless, foster youth.
But, but it's because it's "unduplicated," meaning you only qualify per one thing, so you're counting just a student one time, so it's not duplicated?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Got it. That makes sense.
Team effort, I love it. Thank you.
Trustee Pedersen, did you have a? Oh, sorry, okay, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Toby. You need to vote on the item. All right, we had a motion in a second, so we're going to vote on this. We'll start with trustee Nepom, or let's start with trustee Couturiano.
Aye.
Trustee Nepomassino?
Aye.
Okay, all others? Okay, passes unanimously with student board members concurring. Next, we're going to move on to, oh, before we go there, I just wanted to make sure, I saw that there were some speakers for the American Hostation Silver Level Workforce Well-Being Scorecard Recognition, and I did not include them as a, or I did not invite them up to do their public testimony, so that's my fault. I'm very sorry. Is Kathleen Satterley still here? No? Or the other person was Annie Reed? Is she here? Okay. All right, then we will now move on to item, Board Consent Items F1 through F8, which includes several resolutions and recognition of the following groups during the month of May. We have teachers, school lunch heroes, Asian Pacific Americans, the military, mental health awareness, and the police. Is there a motion on items F1 through F8? Motion by Dr. Whitehurst Payne, second by Vice President Hazen. We'll go ahead and vote. Trustee Nepomassino?
Discussion.
Oh, do we have a discussion on that?
Yes.
Okay, go, go right ahead.
And I know I already shared this feedback with the superintendent, but just want to make sure that we're lifting up Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in particular. It's in consent, but really want to make sure that we're recognizing this important student population in the month ahead.
Thank you, trustee Hazen. All right, anyone else? Okay, now we'll go ahead and vote. Trustee Nepomassino?
Aye.
Trustee Couturiano?
Aye.
Everyone else? Okay, vote passes unanimously with board, or student board members concurring. And now, we are going, moving to Board Consent Agenda Item F9, which is a resolution in the matter of electrifying the San Diego Unified School District. Do we have a motion on item F9, as revised and posted in the agenda? Okay, a motion by trustee Nepomassino, and second by trustee Couturiano. And I know we have several speakers on this, on this item. And because we have so many, we're going to have one minute each. Okay, we'll start with the in-person. I'm just going to call you all, so that you can just come to the front, and then we'll go one by one. Elaney Greeley, as I call your name, if you can just make your way to the front. We have Miles, no last name. We have Serena Pelka, Emma Wyble, Eva Amato, Tyne Parakin, Theo Martin, Yusef Miller, Scott Kelly, Peter Sloan, William Haighy, and Megan Phelps. Okay, so now that we have you guys all kind of gathered, we're going to start first with Elaney Greeley, and you have one minute.
Hi, my name is Elena Greeley. I'm a student at La Jolla High School, and I'm urging the board today to approve the resolution to electrify San Diego Unified School District schools. We should electrify, because this is our opportunity to help SDUSD students, both now and for their future. Electrify, because we are the second-largest school district in California, and this push has the power to influence others to electrify. Electrify, because the climate crisis has an impact on our future that can no longer be ignored, but also for the students right now. Electrify to switch to efficient heat pumps with advanced filtration systems, and to switch to electric buses. These technologies reduce air pollutions, and with this resolution, SDUSD is taking a crucial step to protect students both from asthma now and from climate catastrophe in the near future. Schools should prepare us for our future, not endanger it. Thank you for your time.
Hello, thank you so much for having me. My name is Evangelina Amato. I'm a sophomore at San Diego High and the president of our school's Climate Action Club. I am here today to ask the school boards to commit to a fossil-free San Diego Unified and electrify everything in our school district, including 100% clean renewable energy, onsite solar, electric buses and vehicles, and electric buildings, no later than 2030. Using fossil fuels to power our schools not only sets back our environmental progress, it also creates health risks for students and teachers alike. Carbon monoxide and nitrous dioxide can be leaked into classrooms, which causes physical and cognitive side effects. Electrifying our schools would not only prove that the district cares about climate justice, it would also improve students' performance academically and physically. I strongly encourage you to commit to getting fossil fuels out of our schools to not only benefit our district, but also be influential to other districts and provide an example of efficient electrification in schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You guys could just kind of come on up. Next person?
Hi, my name is Emma Wyble, and I'm a sophomore at La Jolla High School, a member of San Diego 350's Youth for Climate, and the president of LJ Environmental Action. I am here to ask you today to, to commit to a fossil-free SDUSD and to electrify everything in our schools. This means 100% clean renewable electricity, onsite solar, electric buses and vehicles, and electric buildings. Not only is electric infrastructure more efficient, cost-effective, and trustworthy in the event of extreme weather, but the elimination of fossil fuels from our school buildings and diesel fuel from our buses is essential in improving the overall climate of our community. This is our future, this is our community, and we know that we have to act now. The board has supported student climate activists in the past, which is why we urge you to uphold your commitment to our climate, our students' health and future, and the, and building a better community by passing the Building Electrification Resolution. I have dedicated my life thus far to protecting our planet, and I'm asking you to use your position to do the same. I am here instead of studying for my two AP exams next week to ask you to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Theo Martin. I'm a senior at Mount Everest Academy and an intern for San Diego 350's Youth for Oil Campaign. In January 2021, this board unanimously passed the Youth for Oil Resolution, which included the following statements. The San Diego Unified School District will continue to recognize climate change and climate justice as issues of importance to the San Diego community, and will continue to transition to renewable energy sources with the urgency called for by the climate crisis. I would argue that the climate crisis is calling for very urgent action. Today, you can uphold this promise by voting yes on the Electrify SDUSD Resolution. Our petition, which outlines our electrification and decarbonization demands, currently has over 600 signatures from San Diego Unified students, parents, teachers, administrators, and community members. I speak for all who signed when I say that we are empowered by today's resolution but disheartened by its shortcomings. The 2030 timeline included in our petition language is not reflected in the resolution. Further, there are no goals for transitioning to zero emission vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Serena Pelka, policy advocate with Climate Action Campaign. At CAC, our mission is simple, create a zero-carbon future through effective and equitable policy action. When we envision this collective future, we really see schools at the center. As community hubs and places of learning, schools should be healthy spaces with clean air, access to renewable energy, and be free of fossil fuels. The path to get there is through electrification. The time to electrify is now. With major funding available from the state and federal government to decarbonize our schools, we must take advantage of this once-in-a-generation funding opportunity to get the work done. Students are the future, and we owe it to them to create not only cleaner, healthier schools, but communities that are resilient and sustainable, too. This resolution is a meaningful commitment that will hold the district accountable to moving off fossil fuels, and it includes some major wins. We are thrilled to see that all new buildings will be all-electric, and that the district will run on 100% renewable energy through SDCP, or San Diego Community Powers, Power 100 Program by the end of next year. These are big steps in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Tuna Parakin. I'm a volunteer with San Diego 350 and Mothers Out Front, and I'm a parent of two young children who will be attending Marvin Elementary in the next few years. I'm here today to call on the school board to make a serious commitment to fossil, fossil fuel-free future by transitioning to 100% renewable energy and electrification by 2030. This resolution, being considered, is not only vital, not only taking vital steps towards greenhouse gas emissions reduction, but also positively impacts the health and well-being of our students and faculty, who will no have, no longer have to breathe in these dangerous fumes. In addition, the school district will be able to benefit from cost savings gained from transitioning to renewable energy and electric school buses. As the second-largest school district in California, I believe it is our duty to demonstrate leadership on this issue, which will have a profound impact on all aspects of our lives and especially the lives of our children. Furthermore, investment must prioritize schools and communities of concern, where families already bear the brunt of climate impacts and pollution. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Megan Phelps, and I am here today as a San Diego Unified alum and as San Diego 350's Youth for Climate Program Coordinator. I am here to ask the school board to commit to a fossil-free SDUSD and to electrify everything. My San Diego Unified education made me both science and civic-minded, and learning about climate science sparked a passion that has led to my career. In my current climate work with high school students, I get to learn from their tenacity, concern, and passion for climate justice. Thank you for the ways that the school board has listened to their leadership and advanced policies to encourage a just transition away from fossil fuels. This resolution is a powerful first step towards making San Diego Unified School District fossil-fuel-free, showing that SDUSD students and alumni, that science matters, that their voices matter, and that our futures matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Myles Esquerra. I'm a junior at La Jolla High School. I'm here to ask the school board to commit to a fossil-free SDUSD and to electrify everything in our school district, which includes 100% clean renewable electricity, onsite solar, electric buses and vehicles, and electric buildings. We spend approximately 1,000, 1,000 hours per year in school, which makes transforming classrooms into healthy, efficient, carbon-neutral spaces of the uttermost importance. We know that diesel fuel in our buses is bad for the health of our community, and we know that fossil fuels are bad for the health of our earth. Now's the time to go beyond just knowing and actually making the changes needed to protect our community. As said earlier today, 2035 is too late of a date, it should be more like 2025. And this is so important that I'm here skipping, studying for my physics test, so thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Abby Darling. I'm a senior at Patrick Henry High School, and I'm here to ask that you stand up for the future of my generation and all the generations that are to come by supporting this electrification resolution. Earlier this year, I worked with Zoe Geller Alford to found the San Diego Unified School District Environmental Literacy Task Force, which aims to implement an environmental education curriculum over the next few years. An obstacle that many of our school site representatives have encountered is feeling like they can't take action beyond the scope of what's already on campus. I don't blame them, because the idea of creating an entire curriculum is intimidating enough, but the fear of our work being dismissed is even greater. This is why I'm here today. By supporting this resolution, you'll show the members of my task force that environmental education can be taken on a district-wide scale. You can show them that their voices, hard work, and futures will be taken seriously. Additionally, you have the opportunity to set a precedent for environmental action, not only within our district, but also beyond. As the second-largest school district in California, the decision you make today has the potential to influence other districts' views on renewable electrification. It's not every day that you're given the chance to change the world, so I urge you to take this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Youssef Miller with Clean Earth for Kids, and I support this resolution for electrification, to create an environmental, learning environment for these students. And as we can imagine, our students that you just heard from in 2035 will be the ones in these positions. They will be our teachers, they will be our environmentalists, they will be our green job workers and entrepreneurs. So to give them this environmental pride, this clean-energy pride from their school district is something we should be absolutely involved in. So not only to have rooftop solar, but also for having an electrified fleet. This will give our students pride, so when they're asked, what have they done for our planet and for our environment, they can say that we supported our school district in becoming 100% renewable energy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name's William Hagee. I have two daughters who have attended San Diego Unified School District. I guess I could say I'm a senior from La Jolla High School still. And I wanted, everyone's spoken, they've said the obvious. I want to say that lead by example, because you could preach something to students all day long, but they're going to look at what you're doing. Give them hope, because hope's vitally important as well. So let's give them a future. I'm very impressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, was that, that was everyone in person, I believe? So now we have several online speakers as well. Let's start with Rita Clement. Is she available? Nope. Okay, then we're going to move to Peter Sloan. Oh, if you're, if you're here in person, you can come up as well.
Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Jackson. My name is Rita Clement, and I am a volunteer with San Diego 350. When my daughter was teaching at Crawford High School, the temperature in her classroom was over 100 degrees on many days. I am here tonight to ask the school board to commit to a fossil-free SDUSD and electrify everything in our school district. 100% clean renewable electricity, onsite solar, electric buses and vehicles, and electric buildings, no later than 2030. There is a great need to have a plan in place to electrify all school district vehicles. Electric school buses cost less to maintain and do not add to the air pollution already present in communities of concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is Peter Sloan available, either online or in person? Okay, then we're going to move to Alicia Nicole Gonzalez. Okay, sounds like she's with us. Alicia?
Hi.
Hello. Go ahead when you're ready.
Hi, my name's Alicia. I'm here with Mothers Out Front, and as a parent, it is really important for me to see the board commit to a fossil-fuel-free SDUSD. As many of the speakers have touched on, it's just healthier for kids, and that's my main interest here today. In particular, electric school buses are highly efficient, cost less to fuel than fossil-fuel-based buses, and don't pollute the air in communities like mine and in communities of concern. So because there are fewer moving parts, they also cost less to maintain. I wanted to say that 13 new buses at Lincoln High are not enough, and we need a more detailed bus plan as well. What are the pathways, the milestones, and deadlines for 100% electric buses and service trucks district-wide? So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Vanessa Forsythe. Is Vanessa with us?
Hi, my name is Vanessa Forsythe. I am a mother, grandmother, and retired school nurse. I was with the district for almost 20 years, and now I am part of Clean Earth for Kids. I want to ask that the board move forward the 2030, 2035 too late, resolution for San Diego Unified School District to transition to clean energy. The resolution needs to include interim quantifiable targets that includes annual reports to the public. We are not only responsible for preparing students academically, but also for having them prepared to be part of the workforce and involve citizens. So this should also be environmental health included in the San Diego Unified School curriculum with inclusion of job pathways for students interested in green job careers. Lastly, prioritize those communities most impacted by climate change, those closer to the transportation centers, those impacted by poor air quality. That's where we need to start. And include PLA, provide program labor agreement and electric-
Thank you. Okay, next we have Suzanne Hume. Is Suzanne with us? Yep, okay.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Hume, and I'm the educational director and founder of CleanEarthForKids.org. It is vital that San Diego Unified commit to 100% clean renewable energy, building electrification, onsite solar, electric school buses, and zero emission vehicles to protect children's health and future. We must stop climate-warming greenhouse gases and air pollution. Clean air saves lives. Air pollution harms nearly every cell and organ in the human body, with pregnant women and children being especially vulnerable. PM2.5, or tiny bits of air pollution breathed in through the nose, can cross the blood-brain barrier, increasing stillbirth, rebirth, low birthweight babies, birth defects, developmental, learning, memory, and retention problems. Air pollution inflames the brain, harms the central nervous system, and increases asthma, which is the leading cause of school absences and the third-leading reason why children under 15 are hospitalized. Poor air quality increases the asthma attacks, breathing difficulty, increased emergency room visits, and hospitalization. So we need to do everything we can to protect our kids and their future. Thank you from CleanEarthForKids.org.
Thank you. Next, we have John Budorf. Is John-
Good evening. Yeah, I'm here.
Go right ahead.
Good evening. My name is John Budorf with CleanEarthForKids.org. Thank you for this resolution. I ask you to commit to electrify everything in the district. We need 100% clean renewable energy to protect our air and save our planet. Please move forward quickly with onsite solar and storage, all-electric buses and vehicles, and all-electric buildings. It is imperative to stop burning natural gas, which is just a marketing term for methane. Methane is a hazardous air pollutant, which increases the risk of asthma and is a major contributor to climate change. Asthma harms kids and disproportionately affects communities of concern. Building electrification is an important step in not only fighting climate change, but also reducing air pollution. Methane has no place anywhere near children and youth. Our climate situation is at the point of no return. We must take immediate action now to stop the use of fossil fuels. Please electrify the district 100%. It is not enough to be carbon-neutral. We must stop burning fossil fuels to protect our health and our planet. Please take strong and immediate action to stop burning all fossil fuels by San Diego Unified. Please vote yes. Thank you from CleanEarthForKids.org.
Thank you. Next, we have Katie Crist. Katie, are you here?
Hi. Yep, I'm here. Thank you. I'm Katie Crist. I'm a public health researcher at UC San Diego and a member of the Public Health Research Council. I'm also the daughter of two public school teachers, so public schools are very close to my heart. I'm here in support of this resolution, create a healthy school environment by phasing out fossil-fuel use and shifting to 100% clean energy by the end of next year. It's great to see this alignment with the city's climate action plan to eliminate harmful fossil fuel and buildings, which ultimately is going to reduce district costs, reduce emissions harming our environment, and help keep kids healthy. We know now that children living in a home with gas stoves have a much greater risk of asthma, on par with living with a smoker, and eliminating fossil fuels from schools can reduce the chance of triggering an asthma flare-up. Ultimately, this will keep kids in the classroom instead of in the emergency room or homesick. I think it's also great to see the inclusion of the Green Jobs curriculum. We know kids today are living not just with a threat of climate change, but it's the reality, and what better way to help prepare them to tackle these challenges? So-
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you again for your leadership.
Okay, next we have Nancy Kelly.
Hi, I'm Nancy Kelly from Ocean Beach. As a parent, grandparent of two San Diego Unified students and a retired teacher of the district, I support adoption. The federal IRA and BIL legislation make this the perfect time to proceed. Also, please reach out to teachers and staff who are involved in climate issues to benefit from and utilize their knowledge and expertise. I've been involved in climate action for about 17 years after being changed by the realization of climate change's impact on my then-children's futures. At that time, I found my passion itself stating during a professional development training at my school that no matter how much we improved our teaching strategies, it would be worthless if we didn't provide our students with a sustainable planet. Seventeen years later, that observation unfortunately remains accurate. My second-grade students at the time may have children of their own, and I am now a concerned grandmother. Please act. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have David Ramos. David, are you available?
Yes, sir. Hi, my name is David Ramos. I'm a member of the Logan Heights community and a intern at the CleanEarthForKids.org organization. I'm here today to talk about the electrification of school districts and specifically those in communities of color and AB617 communities. These places have been predominantly affected by air pollution, not just from industry, but also from cars. So by electrifying, hopefully, these communities can face a less harmful deduction of pollution in their community, harming less children and harming less families on the long term, damaging their overall health and their overall image to the community. Hopefully, today, you can make choice to help those in need and make things right for communities like mine and communities all over the world. Hopefully, this can add to future projects that could be later implemented into the area. So hopefully, you could say yes to this.
Thank you. And finally, we have Robert Carr. Robert, are you available?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Hello, board members. My name is Robert Carr, and I am a San Diego Building Electrification Coalition volunteer and a former teacher who worked at the San Diego Unified School District. I would like to commend the board for considering this resolution and its willingness to collaborate with the community to make it even stronger in its newest revision. I only suggest that I U add specific language that states that all vehicles, including school buses, be all-electric. I urge the board to sign this resolution with the added feedback given this evening. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, that concludes our public testimony on this item. Do we, and we have a motion and a second, do we have any board members that want, excuse me, that want to discuss the item before we vote? Go ahead, Trusty Nepomassino.
Firstly, I want to thank everyone who showed up at the rally and all those who spoke in favor of this resolution during public testimony. As Trusty Barrera spoke on earlier, students have truly spearheaded the climate activism movement, and this is evident in our audience today, from the recycling challenge winners to youth interns and representatives from Youth v. Oil, San Diego 350, Clean Earth for Kids, CAC, et cetera. This resolution truly would not be possible without student activism. Students are the leaders of tomorrow, but they're also the leaders of today, and you are all truly a testament of that. So thank you.
Thank you. And Trusty Dr. Pedersen.
All right, thank you. I am very proud to be a part of this district tonight. There is no greater good than to serve the whole, and I believe we're doing so with this item. I want to also thank the students who have led environmental advocacy in our district and our community. I also want to thank everyone who showed up today to advocate for a district powered by 100% renewable energy. Public testimony tends to be an ordeal of waiting, and I thank you all for sticking around. I want to thank especially Lee Dolgoff, who's in the room, not only for his work on this item, but for bringing this district and its facilities over many years to the point where these are achievable policies and goals. Thank you, Lee. I also want to thank our labor partners, who will build these facilities of the future. And I want to thank all of those stakeholders who helped pass measures S, Z, Y, Y, and most recently, U. They will pay for this work, and above all, I want to thank the voters who have put their faith in San Diego Unified and its students and staff. There is no institution that has a greater responsibility to protect our children's climate future than a school district. We spend our days thinking about our students' future, about whether our instruction and curriculum are aligned with the jobs and opportunities of tomorrow, about whether our students' academic, social, and emotional development in our schools is preparing them for the world they will encounter upon graduation. We have to be just as vigilant that we are doing everything in our power to ensure that the world they inherit from us is inhabitable. Let me be honest, we've tried to get this done at the county, but haven't quite gotten it over the line. The city of San Diego has tried for many years to get an all-electric reach code adopted, and has not yet succeeded, but hopefully that's in the near future. But ultimately, there is no substitute for doing, for starting from a place of conviction and determination and making it happen. We asked staff, can it be done? Yes. In a fiscally responsible manner, yes. Then let's take it to the board and make it happen. I hope that our colleagues in the public and private sector are paying attention. We will not allow anyone to violate our students' right to a healthy, life-sustaining world. The time is over for jogging in place, for looking busy. It's over. The time has come for putting our shoulders to the wheel and doing, and I believe we're doing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Trusty Barrera.
Yeah, just very quick. I very much thank Trusty Pedersen for your leadership on bringing this forward, along with Trusty Nepomassino and Lee Dolgoff, our partners, SC350 and Climate Action Campaign, and of course, most of all, all of our student leaders, our student organizers. It's amazing to see the level of leadership of both individual students and student organizations that have come forward and developed over the last several years, particularly around climate action and climate justice. And it is so important that you continue to, when you think about where you can act and where you can make impact, that the first place you start is right here, in your own schools and in your own district. This is your district. And as Megan said, this will always be your district, even after you graduate. So what your leadership is doing is allowing us to not only do what's right in our own schools, but as Trusty Pedersen said, to set an example, as many of you said, to set an example for other school districts, for other levels of government, for people in the private sector and in different sectors of our society to make that change. So once again, you are making change tonight, as your predecessors have over the past several years, and your work will do nothing more than encourage more student leaders to step forward over the next future years. to step forward over the next future years, because students in elementary school and middle school, they see what you're doing, and they're going to become, and so we're amazed at what we're seeing right now, but we're going to see tenfold the amount of student activism going forward because of the foundation that you're laying tonight. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you. All right, with that, oh, sorry, Trusty Quittoriano.
Thank you. I just want to take a second to thank all the great work that these community organizations and staff has done, and I want to take a second to remind the board that when passing this resolution and looking at it, we really are standing on the shoulders of giants, the giants of the community, of staff, and the people that put this all together. I think we're all so honored to be part of this movement, and I really look forward to seeing this in the future.
Thank you. All right, shall we move forward? Okay, let's start with Trusty Nepomucino first with voting.
Aye.
And Trusty Quittoriano.
Aye.
Okay, all others? Okay, the resolution passes unanimously with the student board members concurring. Thank you, everyone. All right, that was fantastic. Okay, now we're going to be moving on to here Item E1, which is the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education Semiannual Update to the Board and Data Report for Students Receiving Special Education Services. Superintendent Jackson, please introduce the item.
Thank you, President Basel, and thank you for introducing the item. So I'm simply going to invite folks up to present first our CAC Chairperson, Scott Sodi. Thank you for being here. And also, we have our Special Education Executive Director, Sarah Ott. We also have our Instructional Support Officer, Jen Roberson, here, and we also have our Special Ed Manager, Program Manager, Cynthia Kraschenko, who will be presenting this evening. It is the CAC report, but I believe we're going to be doing it jointly. So, welcome and thank you.
Thank you. Hey, good evening. So it's a great honor this evening that the Office of Graduation was asked to co-present alongside our Executive Director of Special Education, Dr. Sarah Ott, Program Manager of Special Education, primarily supporting high school, Cynthia Kraschenko, and then our Community Advisory Committee Chair, Scott Sodi. And so this evening, we're here to provide updates on our students receiving special education services throughout our district. Tonight's presentation will highlight graduation data for students receiving special education services. We'll also provide an update and an overview on Assembly Bill 181. We're also going to provide an update on the development of our modified curriculum and our applied courses. We're going to review first semester grade data distribution for elementary, middle, and high school. Then we're going to provide updates and information pertaining to our TRACE program, and then share areas of our focus. So to highlight our presentation for this evening, I want to frame it around our overarching goal for our students receiving special education services around our graduation rate. And so for this particular cohort, we developed a goal of meeting 87% graduation goal by the year 2025. This goal was set in the year 2020, when our graduation rate for this particular cohort was at 62%. So I'd like us to keep that in mind as we progress throughout the presentation, because the data that you see and the reflection in the next few slides are going to highlight the progress that we made last year, as well as the progress that we're making moving forward. So for this particular slide, we're going to highlight the outcomes for the class of 2022. And so this slide represents the cohort graduation rate for students receiving special education services in the class of 2022. Out of 885 cohort students, 608 students earned a high school diploma, which was that 68.7% reflected in that slide prior. 106 earned a certificate of completion, and 171 were non-graduates. It's really important for me to emphasize that the 171 non-grads, 10.7% of our students are still enrolled, they've carried on to a fifth year, and about 8.5% of that 19 were non-graduates, meaning they dropped out of school. I'm going to hover here for a moment, because I need for all of us to understand that a certificate of completion indicates that a student completed high school but did not meet the graduation requirements. And it's really important to note that a certificate of completion does not equal a high school diploma. And so that is the premise of our next few slides, so I really want us to understand that. And it's really important for us to know the difference between a high school diploma and a certificate of completion and how that impacts a student's future. So this slide now progresses to the class of 2023 projections. And if you recall, in March, the Office of Graduation presented an overall projected graduation rates for all of our students district-wide. This is in particular to our students receiving special education services. You'll note that for this projected graduation cohort, there are 830 students in this graduating class. Of that 830, 602 are slated to earn their high school diploma, which would make that a 72.5 graduation rate. So you'll notice that we have progressively increased from that 2020 year of 60.2 to approximately 72.5%. However, I want to stay focused on the 146 students earning the certificate of completion and the 82 that are slated to be non-graduates. And so as I shared on the previous slide, the graduation rate for students in the class of 2022 was 68.7. We're slated for this current class to be 72.5. And while we are highlighting a slight projected increase, the next slide is going to really spotlight an area that we've been talking about in the Office of Graduation in our Designing for Meaningful Work Group, and then it then ties into what my colleague Cynthia Kraschenko is going to be speaking to you about with regards to Assembly Bill 181. Okay, so I'm going to stay focused on this slide, because what we did as a team is we dove deep into the 228 students that comprised the 146 that were earning or are slated to earn a certificate of completion, and then those 82 students that were non-graduates or slated to be non-graduates. I think it's very important to note that the majority of students that are earning certificate of completions are students in our moderate-to-severe program. However, I do need to note that there are a few students in our mild-to-moderate program that were miscoded and misaligned throughout their high school journey and placed into courses that then took them off track for graduation. So I would be remiss to not note that it's our collective responsibility to ensure that all students have a path to meet their high school diploma, and we need to ensure that we're doing that. And so the Office of Graduation really examined the 228 student transcripts that were slated, as I mentioned, to either earn a certificate of completion or non-grad. And we found that 47 of those students of the 228 would be eligible to graduate if, in fact, we allow them to under the state minimum requirements. That then, if we then calculated those 47 students into that total number that you saw on the previous slide, we then would have a graduation rate of 78.2 for this particular student group. And then, oh, sorry, went too fast. Before I transition to the next slide and introduce my colleague Cynthia Kraschenko, I think it's really important to note that, as she shares, she's going to reflect on the passage of Assembly Bill 181, which connects, and which connects to what I just shared with you and is very responsive to supporting our students receiving special education services in earning their high school diploma.
Hi, good evening. So I'm here tonight to share with you the essential diploma pathway that I have been sharing with our high schools, training them in what is going to be happening within our state of California. So about two years ago, starting in December of 2020, we had a work group that was brought to the state of California that had basically asked for us to look at, the state of California to look at, an alternative pathway for our students who are in our moderate severe programs. And so through that, the state of California then recommended and adopted a potential pathway for all of our students to be able to graduate with a high school diploma, specifically our students who have significant cognitive disabilities. And with that, Assembly Bill 181 was created, and under that, the ed code was created that I have been sharing to our high schools about. Let's see if I can do this correctly. So through the Assembly Bill and the education code that was created, now our students who are in our moderate-to-severe programs have an alternative pathway to a high school diploma, and that is all of our students who have significant cognitive disabilities. In order for them to be able to graduate on this alternative pathway, which we're calling the essential diploma pathway, the students have to meet a few requirements. So one of those requirements is they have to have a significant cognitive disability. It is going to start with our current class of 2026, which is our current ninth-grade class. And what I'm asking teachers to do through the trainings that I've been doing is that they need to inform, have a conversation with these families, and then offer this option to the families. One of the other requirements is that the students have to take the California Alternative Assessment, which is the CAA that you see up there, and they have to take that in grade 11. And then the last piece, which is the biggest piece, is that they have to meet that state standard-aligned coursework, which meets the state coursework requirements. That's a lot to say, and basically, that just means that our students have to be able to meet state minimum requirements. If they meet those three requirements, then our students will be able to graduate high school with a high school diploma through this alternative pathway.
And I just want to add, I did add two addendums if you want, like reading on the Assembly Bill and the ed code. It is all there. I think it's 120 some pages, but you have that available.
Thank you. All right. So as we progress through the presentation, as Cynthia shared, our students in the moderate severe program through Assembly Bill 181 can earn their essential diploma, beginning with the class of 2026. And that's really important to note, because what we're going to showcase now is how we're moving that dial in making that happen. So it's really important to note that the diploma coursework aligns to our state essential connecting anchor standards. And so what you see on this screen is our progress with regards to modifying our curriculum to align to those essential anchor standards. In order to best support our students in our moderate-to-severe special education programs, we've been working over the past few years to modify the general education English language arts curriculum. This year, we're rolling out the curriculum to all of our moderate severe classrooms, and teachers have been exploring and utilizing Unit 1 across all grade levels. So that's something to highlight and recognize. While we did project that we would have this work finalized a lot sooner, we want to lift up and recognize that we deployed many of our staff members out to school sites during our transition back from COVID. And so we really prioritize our staff working alongside students and being at school sites. And so now we have our teams back in place here that are working to complete all of the units of study that you see here. Once ELA is finished, we'll begin working on other subject areas such as math, science, history, social science, and we'll be aligning all of that to the state minimum requirements that was mentioned. Okay. So this slide also shows our progress with reducing the enrollment of students receiving special education services into our applied courses. You'll notice that in 2019, on the left side of this slide, overall, we had 1,447 course enrollments in applied courses. To date, we have approximately 240. Why this matters is because modifications in courses, such as applied courses, impact our students' ability to earn a high school diploma. So when enrolled in an applied course, it takes them out of a course that earns A through G credit, and then therefore takes them off track for a high school diploma. All students, as we shared, must have access towards earning a diploma, and we need to ensure that we work closely with our high school sites and our counseling teams in scheduling our students into our A through G courses. The next few slides, I'm going to showcase our Semester 1 grade data, more specifically how we have worked alongside our sites with standards-based teaching and learning with regards to showing proficiency in many of our subject areas and decreasing, let me just go there. Okay. So this slide showcases our elementary report card data for the winter session. This is specific to ELA. So this slide compares district-wide elementary report card for ELA with four students on the left side receiving special education services. On the right side, it's our students not receiving special education services. I would like to lift up and highlight that we do show a decrease in students earning a 1, which is the beginning level, and an increase in students earning a 3, which is meeting state standards. So that's really important for us to lift. And as we begin to examine street-level data as a district, it's really important to understand the strengths of our students that fall into the approaching category so that we can better support learning styles and really teach differently at each of our school sites. Similarly to the English language arts data, our math resembles that we also have a decrease in students earning 1 and an increase in students earning a 3, which is meeting state standards. And then this slide represents district-wide grade data for all of our middle schools during the first semester of the academic year. And you'll notice that on the far right is our students receiving special education services, and over the past three years, the percentage of Ds and Fs, the distribution has decreased by 14.8% for students receiving special education services across all subject areas. So that's something to highlight and note. Before I move off this slide, in case there's a question, this slide pertains to UTK through 8, more specifically to 6th, 7th, and 8th at their sites. And then for Dana Middle School, it applies to their 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students, not their 5th grade students. And then finally, this slide represents district-wide grade data for our high schools during the first semester of this academic school year. And you'll notice, again, on the right side, for our students receiving special education services, the percentage of Ds and Fs distribution has slightly decreased by 4.1% for students receiving special education services. And so that's the data that we're sharing this evening, and now I'm going to turn it over to CAC Chair Scott Sodi.
For the benefit of new members, my name is Scott Sodi. I am the Chair of the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education. This is my third year as Chair, although I was just re-elected as Chair for my fourth and hopefully last final year. At least the bylaws have term limits, is a four-year term limit. So unless they change those, which is, you know, likely to happen. For the benefit of the public and those who need to know what the CAC does, we are a parent-led group that advises the district and the board regarding issues related to special education in the district. We represent families and students that receive special education in the district from birth to 22. Speaking personally, I have two children in the district. I have a 4th grader and a 2nd grader, both at Bay Park. My youngest daughter is visually impaired and therefore receives special education services and has done so through the district since she was diagnosed at six months old. I'm mostly going to be providing commentary on the slides that were already presented. That's sort of how we've divided up, so I guess I'll just go back through them very We're encouraged by the increase in the graduation rate. I particularly want to highlight the students eligible to receive the state minimum diploma. In years prior, the district relied on AB 104 to expand the eligibility of students with disabilities to receive a diploma. Now that AB 104 has expired, there are still students that were still affected by the pandemic, and the district can essentially extend the program of AB 104 on its own to benefit these 47 students with disabilities. The majority of them would otherwise be considered non-grads. These are... These are not, the vast majority of them, only very few would receive a certificate of completion. I'd also encourage the, the board and the district to look at extending that program really until the essential diplomas run, is implemented, which is for students that are current, that will be available for students currently in 9th grade. Again, regarding the essential pathway to diploma, I applaud the district for doing the work to actually roll this out, roll out this pathway. Cynthia Kruschenko, I didn't know you were going to be here, but thank you for your work and your group working on that essential pathway. She presented this to the, at our last CAC meeting, meeting for our members. And we hope the students and their families are presented with this pathway, that the number of students receiving the certificate of completion will be reduced, just like we see the decrease in applied courses being offered and enrollment in those, in those courses. We understand the need to give options for families and do what's best for this, for their students. I've also been participating in the meaningful graduation work group led by Dr. Jen Roberson. Excited that there hopefully will be one diploma. There will be a standing unified diploma and various pathways within that diploma. The essential pathway being one of those ways in which to earn a diploma. In this way, eligible students with disabilities will receive a diploma rather than an alternate or lesser or any, it's, it's still a diploma. The work is, is continuing to meet, and I hope the board takes the recommendations in order to benefit all students, including those that receive special education services. Obviously, it's one thing to offer an essential pathway to a diploma, but it must correspond with a guaranteed viable curriculum. The lack of standard modified curriculum for students across the district with moderate to severe disabilities hurts them now and will prevent them from receiving a diploma under the essential pathway even when one is offered. I'd note that the stated goal was to have the math and ELA curriculums completed by January of 2022. We are more than a year past that, and the English language arts isn't done. The math is on hold, and no work has been done towards history, science, any other subjects that might be required in order to have that essential diploma pathway open for them. It is imperative that this work gets completed so that they can actually access that pathway. The other issue presented in the data was the disparity of grades with students with disabilities compared to their peers. The path to graduation starts early. And if students are not meeting grade standards in elementary school, it is unlikely that they're going to magically catch up. The deficit will only continue to grow. Just to highlight what those numbers actually are, 74.1% of elementary students with disabilities are not meeting grade level in English language arts and 58, 59.8% in math. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Sarah.
Have the clicker, Scott. Thank you. Thank you. And I love this joint. It's nice. So in order to talk about how are our students doing in the mod severe program currently, we look to our TRACE program, and TRACE stands for Transition Resources for Adult Community Education. And I know some of you have been out with our students and seen this program in action. And I invite anyone to do that if you haven't already. It is a educational support network that we assist our young adult students with disabilities as they transition from high school to adult life. So typically, students are 18 to 22 years old. And the areas we look at are education and training, independent living, employment, and second, post-secondary living. So I'll start with education and training. Our goal is that students are able to participate in their choice of how to further their advocacy, as you guys mentioned, as they get into this adult education program. So there's four ways that they can do that. They can do it by taking CTE courses that are called Career Technical Education Equity Program, meaning they go back to their high school and they take CCTE courses, kind of audit them to build the skills. If they want to go into automotive or if they want to work in a, a place like that, they can go back and get some of those skills through, through those CTEEP. Other ways is they can go to community college courses, also auditing those to build skills. So if they want to do, you know, something, they can build the skills through taking that course at a community college. And we just had a transition fair, also led by Cynthia, that we had over 300 families participate where these advocacy's were at there and parents could see and participate and sign up for them. State Council is another big one that our, our families and students go to to advocate. And the final one is Strive. Strive is a newer program. It's at UCSD. And it's a student organization that's typically made up of pre-med students that teach classes for students in TRACE around pre-med academics to gain, gain skills in those areas. And it really helps with their advocacy, their health, and their vocational skills by being part of this. So as you can see, we've worked to increase that 95% of our students in TRACE are participating in these type of programs and hope to make, one day have 100%. Independent living, every student through their individual education plan has independent living goals. And every goal is tailored to that student's individual needs. So not every independent living goal is the same. And we want students to be individualized in what they can do. And our goal is that they meet their individualized plan through their individual skills. And some of the skills include traveling, being able to travel, being able to cook, access healthcare, use their community resources, how they're managing time, how they're finding housing. That type of thing is examples of what these independent living skills are. And I'm happy to report, we're on track for 99% of our students to meet those through their time with TRACE. Yeah. Yes, so we were close to 99 pre-COVID, and so we're just now getting back up there, which is evident in this slide. So you can see kind of the workability, which is when they're placed at a work site, what percentage of our students are able to work, which was really desolated during COVID, right? There wasn't access to that. So you can see that year at 1%. We struggled to get it back last year, and this year we're back to 96%, which is higher than what we were pre-COVID. So that's tracks with some of the other data. And this really is about placement to gain employment. So while they're in TRACE, they're already at jobs, and they're already working in, in ways that they can do that. And then last is post-secondary linkage. We want to make sure when a student leaves our system, whether that's earlier than 22 or if they do it when they're 22, that they have an agency that they go into that will help support them moving forward. A lot of our students access the regional center, and we have 100% of our students in a post-secondary, 100% in regional center if they're able to access that. And 100% of our students were able to have that access before they aged out. And some leave earlier than 22 because they're already prepared and, and ready to go. So success. Some areas of focus that we have heard from our community, our CAC community, our, our staff, our principals, are these three areas of focus. So how is summer experiencing supporting? What are some shifts that we made? How are we responding to the behaviors that we're seeing out at our schools from our students receiving special education services? And how are we responding to the vacancies due to the labor market shortage that we're seeing? So these are areas that I wanted to highlight of known areas that we're working on on a regular basis and kind of what we're doing to address them. So you got to hear Toby, so some of these were already shared. But these are shifts we've made based on the feedback we've gotten from summer of 22 that will help us in summer of 23. We, we did a very early posting on staffing. So we've always struggled to necessarily staff during the summer, especially the past couple of years. And so we really wanted to post early to have a better opportunity for educators to have this staffing opportunities. It is extra funds that they're able to get in the summer and for them to kind of figure out which students, so they can teach the same students if possible. We also were more strategic on how we're providing individual support for Level Up. So increasing the paraeducator workday to eight hours allows them to stay later to help students that may need that individual support in Level Up, which caught, you know, is something that has shifted from last year. And any student who needs that level of support can get it in Level Up, regardless if it's a program on their campus or not a program on their campus. And we have employees that can do that. And there's a, a way families can access that, or we can do that through the IEP process. We've had early communication with different departments, including transportation and facilities, so that we can set up bus routes sooner, that we can work with facilities so classrooms are ready and students are able to go right in and their bus starts the first day and they're able, the parents know about what route they're going to be on far earlier than maybe like the first day of school or, or right around the first week, so they can plan their lives around that piece. And then throughout the, the spring, the yellow department has have office hours and guidance, and our team joins them. So it really is a collaborative departmental effort to help make sure that there's integration of summer academics and ESY. ESY should not sit outside. It is integrated, and all the students have the same opportunities that any student has to be able to access all the rich curriculum. We also had priority enrollment for students receiving special ed where they were able to sign up for Level Up, Level Up two weeks early. So they were able to get spots in the programs for things that they wanted as a priority. And it says next step, but I think Toby already met with Scott. And so they will continue to do that just to gather feedback on what we are doing and additional shifts that we may need to make. I, before I shared what I wanted to do and what we are doing to respond, I wanted to share our discipline data. So this is, to the left, students receiving special ed and students not receiving special ed and where we've come. We had a dramatic decrease from 2020 to 2023. And we've seen it kind of level off from 2022 to 2023 in our discipline. The next slide is our suspension. So you can see our discipline incidents are higher, but not all discipline incidences are resulting in suspension, which is work we've been doing, is our alternative to suspension. And how we can see that it is higher. Students receiving special education are suspended more often than students not receiving special education, which is a nationwide data point in research. And so how are we responding to that? What are we doing? Well, we're doing a lot of things, but one thing I want to focus on only is our Behavior Support Resources Department. So our Behavior Support Resources Department is made up of behavior support teachers, behavior support specialists, and paraeducators that are trained in evidence-based practices and go out and coach onsite. They may stay for two weeks, they may stay for four weeks, depending on what's needed. And they work directly with the staff and the student to see if we can get a decrease in the behavior we're trying to replace and an increase in the replaceable behavior. And we're doing this through evidence-based practices, typically around applied behavior analysis, but we use other means of evidence-based practice as well. So you can see that that's evident, why we're hearing behaviors increase. We're also getting more consultation for support. And so I think if you, you know, we'll hear later, but BSR has been a really good resource. But you can see the difference between 2018, 2019, 2019, 20, 20, and 21, 22. So from 492 to 541 is, is a little bit of an increase in, in being able to be out there and responding to these requests. And then what I really wanted to highlight is where they're coming from. So oftentimes, we, we talk about high school and behavior and middle school, but they're not utilizing BSR as much. We're getting most of our requests in UTK and K. And so how our BSR is responding is really with our earliest learners. And we want to increase middle school and high school requests for this so that we can work on all students and trying to get in before they have a behavioral incidence or before they get suspended to bring in these evidence-based practices. So I thought this was a very interesting data point. And then I just want to include some anecdotal data from principals at specialists and early learning at specialists about how this work has helped. So from a principal perspective, they worked with BSR to implement MTSS across their schools. So BSR does school-wide behavioral supports. They also really work with our, our teachers in the mod severe program to do behavioral supports, and they work with our staff in the early learning. So they really can do any behavioral requests, and we want to make sure that people are calling them early and often so we can get in there and start supporting right away. And so some reading you can have about how they're able to really come in and support and how this year, this is from this year, educators and principals have found that very beneficial. The next area of focus is on our staff vacancies. I just wanted to give data. We have about 1,021 FTE, full-time equivalent. So this doesn't necessarily equal a person, but oftentimes does. And we are vacant 83 of those. So we have a very large head specialist field. We have about a 12% vacancy rate right now. And then the other area I wanted to pull out is paraeducators because that's another area that we're really looking to staff. And so a couple of supports that I'm going to highlight is the central office special ed itinerant teachers and how they're supporting in these areas of vacancies. And just to note that we do have an instructional cabinet employee pathway led by Kimberly Moore that is supporting this. Because what we realize is it's not one department that can fill vacancies. We, we need a county-wide outreach to say, hey, come into the field of education, come into paraeducators. We give great benefits. We're increasing that pay. So, you know, come in and, and work for us. We're an amazing employer. And a lot of people do move from a paraeducator to a teacher. I was a paraeducator, became a principal, a teacher, a principal, and now this, this role. So, you know, you can, you can start anywhere and really learn. So we really want to encourage people to do, to get out there and, and really support our work. When we do have vacancies, we have created a model where our central office resource team goes out and supports. So oftentimes, when there's a teacher vacancy or a paraeducator vacancy, the site requests a visiting teacher or subpara. And so that person can provide service. But we don't really have subs that have credentials. So they can't provide the case management of the IEP making sure that the student is receiving their differentiation, their accommodations, like overseeing that student's individualized education plan. So we have a mighty team of itinerant teachers and retired teachers that's helped support that when there's a vacancy. So they, this just shows kind of what requests are out there based on vacancies, if a teacher's on a leave of absence or if they've gone over because they've identified more students than when we did the staffing allocation, and how we've been able to complete IEPs per month based on the amount of staffing we have. And how that's value, you know, there's quotes from principals about how that's valuable to be able to have, okay, I have a subservicing, but now I also have someone that I can contact to help support the case management piece when we've had these vacancies. So in the past, that's been really difficult to do, that we're able to do more now. The next one shows how many staff we've had. And again, just like we said for the curriculum, it's really hard to pull staff out of a classroom to do this work when you have vacancies. So how do you judge when you pull a, a teacher out to help with vacancies? That then creates more vacancies, right? But we do, we do this strategically. We work with the site leader. We have the, the, the person at the same site where we pulled them from, supporting all their needs while we have a substitute, while we're helping support the central office. So that's why you see it increased over time. And we're hoping next year to have even more support in this area. If we, you know, maybe we won't need it. But if we do, which we often do, especially for leave of absences, we will be able to have that level of support. So this is, is what we're doing to help kind of mitigate some of those vacancies while we're working on getting information out to, to help increase that. So here's some more quotes and then a very, very short video from a principal. If we could play it real quick. It's one minute. That kind of speaks to the work that's being done. And then I'll turn it over.
The compliance teachers have been of great support to our case management here at Penn Elementary. We currently do have a vacancy, which did cause stress to our inclusion team. But as a result of, you know, the compliance team coming over to support us, especially as we had triennials building up, they were of great help and support to our case managers, to our students, to our parents, and we feel like we can do this together. I'm very grateful because we have with us Barry Gutierrez, who has been hands-on right away. She contacted us. She got the list of the students that needed support. She started making the agenda items and putting on schedules and everything. So I am very grateful to have him over at Penn.
All right, I'm back. Going back, back. Not too far. Anyway, all right, I guess I'll start here. All right, so back to the TRACE data. We're happy to see that TRACE is back and exceeding the, the pre-pandemic levels. Their community-based learning was obviously severely impacted, as, as Dr. Ott mentioned. I appreciated the presentation by Toby Pace this, this evening. I did meet with her last week. We appreciate the efforts that were made by the district to better integrate extended school year with the summer experience. It's one thing to offer these great opportunities for summer, but another to make them available to all students. In the past, just as examples of things, I'm not saying that this is currently happening, but it's, the, the problems have, a lot of it has but it's the the problems have, a lot of it has surrounded the after-school level-up activities, the afternoon program, not necessarily the academic program. Very basic things like, you know, is my child going to have a paraeducator? Like, is there going to be an aide? Is there a translator? We had a parent who, a student who in the deaf, of hard of hearing program who wanted to take tennis lessons, but there was no translator provided. So she, you know, literally said, I, why can't I never do anything? These sorts of things. I'd also say that students in the E S Y are eligible for transportation. But that's only for the morning program. So there's, you know, you can be taken to school in the morning, but is there's no transportation then for after-school, after the after afternoon program? This is another area of like, well, that, you know, maybe it's, that might just not work for families. Or if you have to be transport, you know, if you have to be transported to another location, if the program is not available at your school that you're attending, and I remind the board that these are not necessarily at your neighborhood school, you know, there, my daughter goes to the V I program, that's at one elementary school in the entire district. That's where the program is. So if you want to go to somewhere else, well, that's the parent going in the middle of the day to, you know, transport them to the after-school program that's available somewhere else. To the discipline data, one of the main issues in special education is the significant disproportionality of discipline for African-American students receiving special education. It wasn't really part of this presentation, but I just, I would be remiss not to mention it. Having heard from these families, there's an obvious anger towards the district and distrust in the district for make, that any lasting change will actually happen. Changing this for the positive will require a change in the culture of the district, district-wide. This is not, African-Americans certainly experience the disproportionality in discipline the most, but all students with disabilities are disciplined at a higher rate than their peers. This is not an isolated issue to limited to a few schools, but rather an issue for every school site to change their culture and behavior. Again, it's hard to pinpoint the most important issue affecting special education, but if I had to pick one, it would certainly be the vacancies. Staffing vacancies simply due to the knock-on effect of every other area we've touched tonight. There's no staff available to provide the services. It simply doesn't matter what is or is not available within the district. Taking early childhood special education, for example, there's been an increase in assessments of three-year-olds. Or three-year-olds that needing to be assessed and therefore then qualify for special education, but then there's not space for them. And so now the, the, but they're placed in school in classes. The teachers are already over, the, they're placed in classes where teachers already have too many students in their class. And these already overworked teachers lead to a problem of retaining the teachers in addition to filling the vacancies that already exist. The high level of paraeducator vacancies is also troubling. We've heard some reports that people applied to these positions but didn't hear back in any timely manner. And one took a job as a custodian in the district, and when asked whether or not they'd consider going back to being a paraeducator, they said, no, they'd make more money as the custodian rather than the being a paraeducator. The itinerant support is a fantastic solution, but it's a Band-Aid to a much larger problem. I don't have a slide about this, but we are, Ed Basely, our Selpa director, and I are going to Sacramento next week for the Selpa Legislative Day, meeting with legislators in Sacramento to hopefully advocate for, well, more funding for one thing, for students. And for those watching wanting to become interested, C A C meets the second Thursday of every month during the school year. Our next meeting is Thursday, May 11. We typically have a parent-to-parent training from 6:00 P. M. and a district presentation at 7:00 P. M. Also plug and highlight our annual above and beyond awards. We're currently taking nominations for anyone who has gone above and beyond to help special education students. Anyone is eligible, teachers, administrators, staff, community members, groups, clubs, really anybody. I would extend an invitation to any board members who would like to attend our ceremony on June 1 at 6:30. And finally, I'd like to thank Dr. Sarah Ott for her leadership and partnership as executive director, and to Dr. Jackson and his team for the increase in transparency and availability of for our advisory groups to participate in the process, to make the changes in these in the district. This leads to the joint presentation that you're seeing tonight and to the board, which is a significant change from years past, as I know that the board members commentated on our last meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any board members that want to ask questions or?
No speakers in this item, no.
Go ahead.
Very briefly, first of all, that was an incredible presentation. I'm, I'm, it's one of the best we've received in a long time. And then we get very good presentations typically. Scott, particularly, I want to thank you for your your volunteerism. I mean, you clearly mastered the subject, and I know it's sometimes a thankless job to be a C A C chair, so I want to thank you.
Thank you.
I I usually try to quietly secretly remedy the gaps in my knowledge when I identify them, but it may be of some public service to 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 ask question publicly. I had always assumed since we had, since we have the requirement for free and appropriate public education through 20, 20, age 21, that if a student, if a student with a disability, for instance, arrives at year 12 and is on, is a non-graduate, that they, if they were, if they want, if they had the will to do so, that they could then proceed to year 13 and that we would continue through 21 presumably to it. Is that, is that not accurate? Or is that, is that true?
Yep, it's accurate. It is age 22. What we found, though, especially for students in our mild moderate program, when they either become a fifth year or they move to trace, they, we don't get a lot of participation.
Yeah.
It's really, we can keep them for four years, and we can keep them engaged.
It's best to keep on track.
But when they see their peers graduating and they have to stay another year, it makes it very difficult. And so we do, we do have students that do go to a fifth year, and I think that data has shown some that do.
So some of these non-graduates presumably will continue on and attempt to.
Continue and get a diploma.
And and I had another, I guess, a question comment, but one of the things that occurred to me in this, when you're, as you're describing these services, which are incredible, is some of these services, as we as a district are trying to tackle some of our challenges around absenteeism, around not identifying unduplicated students and raising our rates of of survey response and tackling this this absentee crisis, which is having its fiscal impact, that some of these, the services that you've piloted and pioneered and mastered on the special ed side, it seems on the general ed side, we might be able to benefit as a district from implementing some of them, some of the very things that you've mastered with great difficulty and challenges and creativity on the general ed side as well.
And just so everyone knows, for anyone watching, anyone can contact B S R, Behavior Support Resources, regardless if they have an I E P or not. So we want to be able to support all students and use practices we use for everyone for all students, because we can learn a lot from students that, you know, have difficulty learning.
I'd also say that the universal design for learning gets talked about a lot, but not necessarily implemented. And so it it would certainly benefit students with disabilities as well as every other student in the district as well.
Dr. Whitehurst Payne?
I want to thank you all for this presentation, of course, because over the years, you know, we've had an adversarial relationship, but it seems like we're coming in alignment more. And I'm thankful for that. This didn't come up specifically, as I recall, but we caught up with all of our back I E Ps.
Yes, I did write that down, but I didn't share. I have that exact data. So what we've shared in the past is, yep, we had our early learning assessments. This time last year was about 193 overdue, and we're under 50. So we have caught up. We've also caught up with our, even though we have vacancies with our overall initials and triennials, this time one year ago was 845, and we're below, we're right at 658. So we're continually to go down, even though we've experienced staffing concerns.
And I'd say that we'd get that, we get that report of data every month to track it to make sure it's still trending in the correct direction.
So you're monitoring that for us. Thank you. And I think someone said something interesting about the, the data in terms of, I visited Valencia Park Elementary School, and it was in the paper that they had one of the worst attendance rates in the city or something. And the principal shared that because they have three classes of mods of years, I believe it is, they have several classes over there, and they have young T Ks and kindergartners, and that's, those are the grade levels that when there are health issues, the parents tend to say, oh, no, we won't go. And so she was complaining that when data are reported, not by you, but by the papers and so on, that you you define it, qualify, what's going on for a school with three special education mod severe classes versus schools that don't have any, and lots of T Ks and so forth. Let's just put it in context and talk about what's really going on. But in general, it seems too that the vacancies are coming down to, you're dealing with them in an effective way. And Scott, you're okay with that, the way they're going down?
Always like it to be zero.
So you're pushing staff all the time. I know, I see someone over here from H R, but I just continue to push the notion of the internships and training folks even before they graduate from university so that they can at least be aides or whatever. And hopefully this new grant will help us to get folks in who can serve as at least S E A, special education, support people before they become teachers to decrease that number.
And I think, at least for me, as a person who's been in special ed pretty much my whole life, it really was in high school when I had access to students that learned differently that I felt this passion to work with them. So at schools like Claremont High School, who have peer tutoring programs where students get access to students who learn differently, we see more students signing up to be paraeducators and teachers as they go to college. So I think the overall arching goal of all of us is to have more access for these students where they're visible onsite. You know, when I was growing up, they were students who learned differently were somewhere else. And so when you have more access, you see more passion for students going into special.
Thank you. Okay, Trustee Hazen.
Thank you. And it's good to see a lot of things moving in the right direction. Just clarifying question around the assessment backlog. So I heard the backlog is going down. Are we in compliance now?
So there's different reasons why things are overdue. Not all of it is overdue means we're out of compliance, because sometimes it's overdue because we sent meeting notices and parents didn't show up to the meeting, or they, you know, rescheduled for outside of the timeline. And so we are not in compliance in some of the instances, and we are in compliance in some. Previously, I would say three to four years ago, we would have 1,200 overdue events. So our goal is always to be lower than 500. People have asked, should it be zero? It's unlikely that it would be zero because there's different reasons why things are overdue. And we're trying to pull out that data to say what's really overdue because it's out of compliance and what's overdue because of other factors, so that we can get a more clear picture of how out of compliance we are and what that looks like. And our main goal is to focus on initials, because if a student has a triennial, they're still getting serviced if we're late. But if they have initial, that's the first time they're being assessed. And so we really want to decrease those, and we're close to 100 in initials and 50 in early childhood. So that's really our main focus.
And I think, you know, it would be helpful for us to be able to see that moving forward. So it's great to see that we're moving in the right direction, but a little more information on that, I think particularly as we continue to invest in early learning, and we know that early intervention is so key, knowing how we're doing with those youngest students is really important. And I'm wondering along those lines, so as you talked about behavioral supports and those supports being available to everyone, are we doing anything proactively to provide coaching, training, support to U T K teachers and early childhood educators so that they are equipped with the tools on day one to really understand and meet the needs of our four-year-olds?
It's like you looked into our strategic plan. Yes. So we've worked really closely with Dr. Stephanie Savinsky in her department, and we just had a B S R make it, take it, where teachers got to come and get all the visuals and schedules and routines for all U T K teachers. And so it is workshops that we are holding as well as going in. The thing that's unique about B S R is they actually show up to your classroom and come alongside you and what you need. And so we've offered that for any U T K or K teacher who wants that level of support. We offer school-wide trainings on de-escalation strategies. We offer information on students with autism and the way that, you know, dysregulation occurs. So we're doing a lot of things proactively, and we will continue, which is part of our strategic plan, to really focus on not only U T K K, but also our mod severe classroom. Those are the two areas that we're seeing the highest consultation rates.
Thank you. And then going back to some of the graduation data, I know we heard that there were some mild mod students who were placed in misaligned classes. And I guess I was just wasn't clear, do we have the opportunity to rectify that before they're eligible for graduation? Or what's this? It sounded like we messed up, and so I want to know, what are we doing to make it right?
So we're owning the mistakes that we've made, yes. Is it, it's never too late, which is why we are being thoughtful in our programming right now, currently, making schedule changes to our students who we've identified these these errors. But it is very impactful, to be honest, that by the time your senior year has occurred, that you've taken applied or functional classes that have taken you off track for graduation. So in the Office of Graduation, we talked about really monitoring and holding our sites accountable for proper placement in courses. And so we are working closely on changing courses now and then leading up into the summertime so that our students have the best chance that they can to earn their high school diploma. But for, I'm sorry.
This is problematic, because this is something we've been working on for years. Yeah, I mean, that's problematic. That's very problematic. That's what we've been bragging about A to G and how every child, I mean, for years, pre-pandemic, how we go in and look at every child every year to see what's going on. And now you're telling me that you're waiting still till senior year? This is not acceptable. I don't know what, how we got off track with that.
So we're in agreement that it is our collective responsibility, and so we are working to put in systems and structures in place. We have done, we shared a data point with regards to the amount of applied courses that students are being enrolled in. So it's really important to note, Scott mentioned that this starts from elementary to middle to high school. So we need to be thoughtful in the placement of our students beginning at the U T K K through through their their educational journey. And we have eliminated, decreased the amount of students taking applied courses at the high school level, at the middle school level, because once you are enrolled in an applied or functional course, that does take you off track for your high school diploma.
I don't, I really don't want to beat a dead horse, but I understood that we did something with the computer, and we would go in the counselors and everybody would get together every year and look at all the students who were, and I don't see anybody here, maybe Sabrina remembers some of it, but we looked at all counselors, people at the school site, had a team that went in and looked at every child and worked through what that child needed for graduation and not just waiting till the end. It was, I mean, am I in La La Land?
That's why I asked the question.
Remember that.
So may I?
No, Dr. Whitehurst Payne, you're correct. I think the team has expressed, we take full responsibility. We will work on getting better. We're not going to change that tonight. Point taken.
Yes.
By Vice President Hazen and Dr. Whitehurst Payne. But the staff is here, being fully transparent.
Which I appreciate.
We made a mistake. We're going to work with sites.
And I'm not blaming them because they weren't the ones here. Tell them about this.
You're not in, your question. You're not in, your question was, are you in La La Land? No.
No, we were not.
This is real time. It is real data. Point taken.
And I do want to share with you that the work that I have been doing for the last two years is exactly what you're saying. So I have been diving deep in with our high schools and really working on these changes, starting before they come to the high schools. So a lot of my work that I have really been stressing is exactly what we're talking about, removing those students, because I am so passionate that every child deserves a high school diploma, that they should not be in these applied courses. And so that is the work that I have truly tailored, and that is why I'm doing what I'm doing, is so that we have exactly what you're describing. So I have a few schools that I'm, I'm working with and nudging, but most of them are very accepting to what I am helping them and supporting and coaching the administration on.
And I would just say we, she's going in individual child by individual child.
Yeah.
It's great to hear and appreciate the honesty, the openness, the transparency and the work y'all are doing. Last thing I would just ask, when you come back again, it's really hard for me to understand the whole story here without data being disaggregated. So understanding a data point for mild mod versus mod severe or other demographics would be really helpful, particularly as it relates to graduation requirements or report card grades. But seeing that disaggregated data and also if we can see goals. So we see numbers and we can see change over time, but I don't know what we're trying to get to. So that would be really helpful moving forward.
Yeah. And one thing I want to share just related to that is right now, we have systems where a lot of times our students in the mod severe program aren't shown, and it was shared in the curriculum aspect, but also in our report cards. So there are alternative standards that they're working towards. So part of the meaningful graduation is how do we have a grade report card that has the general ed standards and the alternative standards all together. So just, I think what you're sharing is a system concern that we don't necessarily always disaggregate data that way. So yes, I agree.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Barrer.
Thank you, President Bazza. So great report. And again, very much appreciate the, so it was, it used to be that we weren't even talking about the same things, the CAC and the staff, and now we're talking about the same data together. So it's very, very encouraging. So I think I understand the, we've got the ability as a district to extend the AB 104 requirements as we build towards the AB 181 requirements. So for instance, these forty-seven students that we've identified in the class of 2023, do we need to take some action if we want to make them eligible to graduate?
We have taken action.
We have taken action, yes.
So we've met with all high school principals, counselors, where we've analyzed their transcripts, properly placing them in the courses that they need to meet that minimum.
Yeah.
Then they'll be enrolled in summer school with the proper course requirements. Upon completion of that, then they would earn their diploma.
Okay.
And if I may, just for clarification, the board has already taken action providing administrative procedure that Jen has.
Thank you.
Worked with principals on. So while we inform the board, there is already procedure in place.
Right.
We have to monitor that to make sure we're aligned. And that's what the Office of Graduation is doing.
Right.
So that, I think that answers your question.
That's perfect. Answers my question. Yeah, that's great. And then it's just, you know, back to, you know, this, this issue. I mean, shouldn't we be in a process of actually just phasing out applied courses? So, right.
So yes, so part of the work group is for the twenty-three, twenty-four, sorry, twenty-four, twenty-five school year, is it won't be even part of the course of study because we're building out what the course of study is for this essential pathway for a diploma.
Yes.
Which won't, will include different courses. And so these applied courses will no longer exist.
Thank you.
And I think it's important to note that there is a committee working on what that looks like, and that will be coming to the board. And I know Scott's a part of that in terms of, you know, what does meaningful graduation look like? And as we, we have been very successful in meeting the A through G requirements, we also need to be very aware of what that really means in working with UCSD and some of our partners, because we may be expecting more than what UC, or we may be, we may have some students meeting A through G, but there are some requirements that UC is looking for.
Yes.
That maybe our students aren't taking. And so we look forward to the committee's recommendation to us as we go forward, because they're doing some, some really thoughtful work.
Yeah.
And I, again, I think we're in a different context. And as we know, we have many of our students who have applied to UCSD and other UC schools that aren't getting in. And so we need to take a close look. And again, there's, there's one thing to be eligible
Yeah, right.
And qualified, meaning their qualifications, and another to get in.
Yes.
And so we need to be thoughtful around that. And so I want to thank the team in advance for this and know that more, more is to come.
Dr. Whitehurst Payne?
I just want to say that, and I think Richard got at that, about fading the classes away, because my comments are not really directed at you individually. The system should have a way of monitoring. It should not be dependent upon, oh, we got a new principal, or we have a counselor who's not following some strategy. We've, we've got to have, and it shouldn't, all four of you are different. So I'm not directing it to you or any, you weren't here, et cetera. But we've got to have a systemic approach.
Yes.
So that it's uniform regardless, if you fell dead or I fell dead, whoever, it should go on. Good practices and things that have been established should go forward. So I'm looking forward to this work from the committee.
Trustee Hazen.
So in terms of eliminating the applied courses, we have to have these new classes developed, and we're way behind on that. But I'm just trying to put pieces together. And so I'm wondering what the plan is, if we don't have enough teachers to do that. Are there other folks who can develop that? And I see you laughing, so hopefully that's good news.
No. So there's a difference, go ahead.
There, there's a difference between the, the classes. So the applied classes, when they were originally developed, were intended for our moderate to severe program, and they were misused and used for our mild moderate program. And so they, the intent should never have been for our mild moderate students. So that's what those classes, the original intent was for. And so we don't have to develop any classes for our mild moderate students. And for the moderate severe program for the essential diploma, those classes are already there. They're the functional courses. And what we're going to do is just rename them to align them with what their general education peers are doing. So if it's an English one-two class, it's going to be an essential one-two class. So we're just going to take that functional English class and rename it so it mirrors what their peers are doing.
So what I want to add on is the curriculum piece to that. So for students in the mild moderate program, they'll be in general ed courses. Those courses already have curriculum that needs to be accommodated, and there's strategies to do that. The, the students in the mod severe program will be taking courses that need resources that are modified so it aligns across, because right now they may be taking a functional English course, but that doesn't mean it's the same curriculum being used across all high schools per se. And so what we're working on is, we've done this ourselves and it's taken years. And this is something that's coming out from California. And so we're, with, with our math adoption that we're looking to have come up, we want the publisher to do this. You have a whole population of students that need something different. We want it to be modified when we adopt that curriculum. So we've been really working hard with our publishers on the adoption, and we've gotten a lot of people sending us modified curriculum that has already started to develop since 181 got passed. That never existed before. So we're really encouraged by that, that it isn't going to be something that we're doing in-house with only our personnel. It's going to be developed as a state through publishers that we would get generalized curriculum from. And so we're hoping to be able to provide resources and tools as opposed to an actual modified curriculum of how to take what you're getting and differentiate it for the students within the modest severe program, which will be much quicker.
Great.
And so we're hoping to do that very quickly.
Thank you.
So just one key point that is very, that's for our students in the mod sphere program. Our students in the mild mod program should have full access to our general education courses.
I was gonna, hmm? Oh, I, I wanted to ask a quick clarification question. So for the graduation goal, you mentioned that you want to increase that to eighty-seven percent. So that's only, is that only for our mod severe?
Students in the mild moderate program.
Oh, okay. So that's not super clear. Yeah, like, Trustee Hazen was saying.
When you look at the slide that talks about how that is differentiated, there's a slide that talks about the sixty-five is in one group, and there's ten percent getting certificate of completion. That will be, now be essential diploma. That will be separated, which is why it's eighty-seven percent in 2025, is because we want to include the essential.
So I, I don't think that's clear. I mean, it wasn't at least to me, so.
Yeah, we tried to make it, yeah. That's, there's a slide that tried to call that out.
So that's only for the mild mod?
Students in the mild moderate program.
So the moderate to severe, do we have, yeah, I mean.
It's a hundred percent. We want a hundred percent of our students in the mod severe program to get a certificate of completion or essential diploma.
So the goal is, we have two, two groups of, of students. We have students that are in the mild mod program. The graduation goal for those students, just like our other students in the general education, would be eighty-seven percent. Then we have another subgroup of students that are students in our moderate to fierce, moderate to severe program. I always, that's a tripper up for me. The goal is a hundred percent. We are developing the essential diploma, which then aligns to the, the modified curriculum that you saw.
And you can see in the graph, when we say a hundred percent, we're talking about a hundred percent of the students in the program, at which it represents about ten percent of our students receiving special education. So that's, I wish I could click. That's the circle graph that we use. I think it's slide four or five, that really showcases the all students with special ed, which students we're talking about when we say receive a high school diploma, which students we're talking about with certificate of completion, which is ten percent, and which students were non-grad that we're trying to make sure get into that high school diploma pathway.
Okay. And then the other question I just had was around the, the alternate pathways. They're going to, you're going to be working with ninth graders. So I would even suggest, I mean, are we working with them in middle school to make sure they're prepped for ninth grade?
Yes.
And also not just the student, but the parents working towards them. And then it, let's say they don't feel like they're comfortable in ninth grade with going into that. I mean, can they decide in 10th grade? Or does it, does it have to be a ninth grade decision?
So what I have been doing, and I've had a conversation with all of our administration from elementary to high school about this. So I have developed a letter for our parents, for our staff to send home, as well as language for our middle school. And I've even offered to do training for our middle schools on the essential diploma pathway so that I can go and train the teachers on what to put into the IEPs. Because right now, all the state is asking us to do is just to have the conversation. And then once we have it board approved and we're able to move forward, then we will be able to move forward with all of those students from ninth, our current ninth grade, 2026 on. But what I'm trying to do is have it so that our middle schools are onboarding for our high schools.
Sure. Thank you. And I was just going to encourage fellow board members, if you haven't gone on the trace field trip, I guess, it's a day long and it's very eye-opening because you're on buses and you're on the trolley, but you're going with some of these, the students that are, you know, learning life skills. We went to the USS Midway and they were helping out there. And then we went to like a Smart and Final. And it, it's a, it's a very, like I said, very eye-opening and creates a lot of awareness around what our students are struggling with every day, you know, just to, just to move forward and be independent. So I would encourage you to take part. I think Dr. Whitehurst Payne and Richard, have you gone and done it yet?
I did.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it's.
Yeah, I, I went to the, we, we went to the Red Cross and on around and around and around. It was a nice field trip. Thank you. But I, I just want to leave one thought. And did you say something about anybody can use the behavior support?
Yes.
And pause here. To us, we were struggling with, what do we do with some students who were getting all the, is that one solution to really throw out there potentially for code language?
Thank you.
Okay. This is, I mean, if it's, if service is available, people are skilled and know what to do, then maybe they can help some students who need the help. So.
All right. I think we're going to wrap up here. Thank you so much. We really appreciate your time.
President Bazza, we did have one speaker, Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Would like to speak on this item.
Okay. We will just kind of let our speakers leave, depart. And we will bring up Heather Russell. You will have three minutes to speak on this agenda item.
My name is Heather Russell, and after four due process cases and a class action lawsuit, it's shameful that San Diego Unified and Mr. Jackson, you'd rather funds for special education go to legal fees than to give a child with special needs who's medically fragile, like my son, the services and materials required to meet his needs, to help him thrive and for him to be successful. Three thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. That is the amount that San Diego Unified is negligent reimbursing our family when you breach a settlement agreement. LGBTQ, black history, Jewish history, disabilities, deaf, hard of hearing, these are some of the themes and topics of books that you, Mr. Jackson, you refused reimbursement for my son. And it shocks me that you are filling the school libraries with these books for students, but you're denying this education, these themed books, this education for my son. Why is money better spent on lawyers than what's already agreed in a settlement to help a child? Last week, I received a letter from the Complaint Investigation Unit in the Special Education Division at the CDE, who identified corrective action that needed to be taken in compliance for San Diego Unified and for you, Mr. Jackson, for specifying, and I quote, "Settlement agreements need to be implemented as they are written," end quote. And that includes not breaching settlement agreements. Your legal counsel advised you otherwise, and they were wrong, and it is shameful. Getting away with keeping funds to help a child does not make a good leader, Mr. Jackson. I've made multiple requests, phone calls and emails for a meeting with you, and they were ignored. I met with the ADR and requested a meeting with you, Mr. Jackson, and it was refused. Last board meeting last month, I asked for a meeting with you. I followed up with an email to you requesting a meeting, and it was ignored. Ignoring the most vulnerable students and their families does not make you a good leader. And Vice President Hazen and Ms. Whitehurst Payne, when you talk about your concern with this presentation and how, how could these students be guided in the wrong direction for graduation? Or how could they be, how could this happen? It's because they're ignored. It's because they're dismissed. It's because they are not a priority. Not doing the right thing makes, making life harder for a child with special needs does not make you a great leader. Denying LGBTQ, black history, Jewish history for my son does not make you a good leader. Reimburse the three thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Trustee Barrer.
Can I make a motion to approve items G two, three, and four, and H one, two, and three?
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That might be a record.
Do we, do we have any discussion before we?
Two, G two, three, four, H one, two, three. It's basically everything left before the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a, a motion on the floor by Trustee Barrer and a second by Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Any discussion? We're good, okay. Okay, let's vote. We'll start with Trustee Couturiano.
Aye.
Trustee Nepomassino.
Aye.
Okay, all others. Okay, motion passes unanimously with students concurring. Okay, let's move on to H, that was H two, three. I got to catch up now. Okay, we are at the superintendent's consent agenda. consent agenda. Okay, we will now consider items H1 through, I'm sorry, I1 through I53. This is the superintendent's consent agenda. Item 40 is being withdrawn from today's agenda and the following items were previously withdrawn by staff. I4, I17, I22, I29, I30, I32 through 36 and I52. Is there a motion on items I1 through I53? Okay, motion by Trustee Dr. Waiters Payne. Is there a second? By Trustee Couturiano. Any discussion? Okay. Oh, Trustee Hazen.
So for item I18, I had a question which was answered before, but want to make sure the other trustees know. So in that item, it says, District adopted in supplemental core area student materials and says for dual language programs, will purchase Spanish language materials. And I was concerned because I had heard that we hadn't necessarily provided those in French and/or Mandarin and had been assured by staff that these purchases will be included this year.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we also have a speaker, sorry, I overlooked that, on item I16.
Oh, sorry.
Let's see, Pam?
Oh, that's my people.
Is this, is she?
With sports, first.
Oh, okay. Is she in person or online or? Oh, there she is.
Here, it's 12 o'clock. This is the.
You will have three minutes.
I'm using a little gray button, ma'am. A little gray button on the bottom.
On the bottom.
Right there.
Oh, there, gotcha.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Pam. I haven't been here for a while, Little League and all. This is Agenda 16. I have to say I'm in support of this, which is probably surprising to you. This is wonderful to provide funding for more sports for females, girls. With the threat of changing Title IX, we must remember the purpose of Title IX and assure it stands as intended. Fairness and equality for girls and women in sports. Diversity, equity and inclusivity have no place here. We all know what a woman is. We all know what a woman is not. Recently at a school in Wisconsin in the Sun Prairie Area School District, multiple sources reported that four girls had just completed a swim unit and were rinsing themselves off while still in their swimsuits when an 18-year-old male student walked in, got undressed, entered the shower, stood near, stood near the four girls and said, "I'm trans by the way," and exposed himself to the four girls. That easy. It's alleged the school district violated Title IX requirements regarding sexual harassment and the school did not notify parents in a timely manner. The district seemed to act in its own interest. I'm sure you're all aware of the Loudoun School District debacle in Virginia. A sexual assault occurred with a biological boy wearing a skirt raped a girl in the girls' bathroom in May of 2021. The subject was transferred to another school where he assaulted another girl under the same pretense of being a girl. Question, if a boy claims to be a girl, how can he rape a girl? Answer, we all know, because he's a boy with a penis and will never be a girl. A grand jury report said the Loudoun School District was looking out for its own interests over that of the students and that the school district failed at every juncture. The jury's report also condemned then Superintendent Scott Ziegler for denying that he had any knowledge that this occurred, the assault. The school board fired Ziegler days after the grand jury report and he subsequently was charged with misdemeanors. I would like to believe that each one of you on the board, even the students, would protect and defend girls first and foremost instead of the boy or teen-aged adult predator with the penis. Decent, real men of integrity with, will protect girls and women every single time. Who would all of you protect in those instances? Please always protect girls as they are entitled by Title IX on their sport teams in their safe spaces so they can enjoy, thrive and succeed in these school years. And just kind of a funny thing, I haven't been here for a while, so I need, I see there's the single-use bathrooms now. So I always tend to go into the women's restroom because I don't care to see if there's a urinal where the men's restroom used to be. But what's funny, obviously a man was in there because the seat was left up. So that impeded me from using the toilet. So I had to go in the other stall. So now I've got to search for a stall with the seat down. So we're, we took a wrong turn here.
Thank you. All right. I think we have a motion on the floor for items I1 through I53. Let's go ahead and vote. Let's start with Trustee, I can't remember which student went last, Trustee Nepomassino.
Aye.
Trustee Couturiano.
Aye.
All others. Okay, motion passes unanimously with students concurring. We are now at public testimony. We have, let's see, it looks like two individuals online to speak on toxic pesticides and synthetic turf. Let's start with Suzanne Hume, if she's available.
She was here earlier. Yes, thank you guys.
Thank you.
What a wonderful evening with building electrification. My name is Suzanne Hume. I'm the educational director and founder of CleanEarthForKids.org. And CleanEarthForKids.org is asking you to please stop the installation of synthetic turf fields to protect children's health, athletes, our water, fish and wildlife, because synthetic turf, also known as artificial turf or plastic grass, is just a plastic nightmare, full of toxic chemicals, including PFAS chemicals that do not break down and continue to harm health. Also lead has been found, along with PFAS, on the plastic plates of grass, the backing and the infill. Please see our Clean Earth For Kids website, Team Five, Stop Synthetic Turf, for details, videos, resources, and please contact us with any questions. We are here to help. We're doing our best to get you resources to replace toxic synthetic turf with real grass to protect our kids and athletes from toxic chemicals, plastics and heat. Synthetic turf fields can get 70 degrees hotter than natural grass. We cannot have our kids and athletes collapsing from heat on our fields at school. We need to protect our athletes and then our kids also from increased lower extremity injuries caused by synthetic turf fields. As you may know, the US Women's Soccer Team sued to play on real grass like the men's team and the NFL Players Union has made it clear they want to play on grass. They cannot afford to get injured and wipe out their whole careers from synthetic turf. We need grass playing fields with good drainage and videos like pesticide-free park on our website shows how you turn a dirt lot in California into resilient grass playing fields with the use of natural ingredients. Because when you stop synthetic pesticides and you stop the man-made fertilizers and actually feed the soil and what it needs for resilient grass, you can turn a dirt lot into resilient playing fields at a fraction of the cost. Synthetic turf fields cost millions of dollars and they get hot and they contain toxic chemicals. And if you don't clean them with chemicals and water, then MERSA, MERSA is found on a majority of synthetic turf fields. Let's do what is right for our kids and stop synthetic turf and keep our kids off toxic chemicals, PFAS, lead and heavy metals. Thank you so much from CleanEarthForKids.org.
Thank you, Suzanne. And we have John Botorff. Is he available? Go ahead, John.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Botorff with CleanEarthForKids.org. I ask San Diego Unified to stop using toxic pesticides. You have 31 pesticides listed on your website as approved for use in the district. Twenty of them have active ingredients banned in other countries. Permethrin banned in 33 countries, pipronil 38, emetichoprit and diacquat banned in 29, and cyflutrin banned in 31 countries, for just a few examples. Please implement an organic pest management program that does not allow synthetic pesticides or synthetic fertilizers. Pesticides are poison. They are designed to be toxic and lethal. That is their purpose. There is a massive amount of studies showing the damage done by the use of these toxic chemicals to biodiversity, the environment and human health. They contaminate our groundwater and our air and many are linked to causing cancer, endocrine disruption and reproductive and developmental harm, along with being toxic to pollinators, mammals, birds and fish. And many are found to contain PFAS forever chemicals, which are linked to low birth weight, thyroid disease, increased cholesterol, liver damage, cancer, diabetes, endocrine disruption and other serious health problems. Not only are synthetic pesticides and synthetic fertilizers a threat to our health and the environment, they also contribute to climate change. Ninety-nine percent of synthetic pesticides and fertilizers come from fossil fuels. The continued use of these toxic petrochemicals harm the climate and our kids' health. These poisons are a direct threat to human health, biodiversity and our climate. Legal does not mean safe. China bans 54 pesticides. The EU bans 195, while the US only bans 21 pesticides. Please stop using toxic synthetic pesticides in the district. There are safe alternatives. Other districts like Galeta and Oak Park have stopped the use of synthetic pesticides. Please do the same. And I also want to echo Suzanne's comments about stopping synthetic turf. Synthetic turf is a giant field of plastic. It is a massive source of microplastics and is full of incredible amounts of toxic chemicals like PFAS and other heavy, and heavy metals. So please do the right thing. Stop synthetic pesticides in the district and also stop synthetic turf. Thank you from CleanEarthForKids.org.
Thank you. And thank you all for providing your comments to the board and the superintendent today. We appreciate your input and please know that your perspectives help us to better serve our students, parents and the community. You'll be glad to know that this concludes the agendized business of the board. A special day of the teacher celebration will be held on May 9. The next regular meeting will be held on May 16, 2023. This meeting is now adjourned.